Good evening and welcome to this Pasco, City of Pasco Council Regular Meeting, November 4th, 2024. The City Council thanks you for being a part of your city government at meetings. The City Council takes formal action on items, holds public hearings, and conducts other businesses of the city. Agenda packets are available on the city's website at www.pasco-wa.gov/agenda. For those in attendance, there's a small table as you enter immediately to your right, where there are physical packets. This meeting is being televised on PSC TV, Channel 191, on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and in Richland, and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, YouTube channel, and via GoToWebinar. This and previous council meeting video is available on the city's website as well. The public may submit comments or ask questions by contacting the city manager, city clerk, or by using the Ask Pasco app. With that, Ms. Clerk?
Council members Barajas?
Present.
Blaisdell?
Present.
Grimm?
Here.
Harpster?
Present.
Prowlus?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Milney?
Present.
And Mayor Serrano?
I am here. With that, if you all please join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. With that, we're going to move on to item number four of our agenda, which is the consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by roll call vote as one motion is listed in the packet. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If further discussion is requested by a council member, the item may be removed from the consent agenda to the regular agenda and considered separately. So with that, before we get a motion, um, or what, well, oh, do we have anyone asking to remove any of these items before I go through? Okay, hearing none and seeing no lights. We got item 4A, which is approval of meeting minutes from October 21st and October 28th. Item B, Bills and Communications approving claims totaling the amount of $5,711,000, $720, $724.84. Resolution 4513, Acceptance of Scope, Acceptance of Work for A Street Phase 1.5 Project. Resolution Number 4514, Professional Services Agreement Amendment Number Two with Jacobs for, with Jacobs for Butter Water, Butterfield Water Treatment Plant Improvements. Item E, Resolution Number 4515, West Pasco Water Treatment Plant Phases Three and Four, Drinking Water State Revolving Fund Loan Acceptance. Item F, Resolution Number 4516, Butterfield Water Treatment Plant Drinking Water State Revolving Fund Loan Application Approval. Finally, Item G, Resolution Number 4517, Change Order Number Six for the East Urban Growth Area Expansion Sewer Local Improvement District Number 152, Phase Four Project. Again, anyone seeking to move these to later on the agenda? Seeing none, Mr. Milney?
Thank you, Mayor. My motion is I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Got a motion by Milney and a second by Blaisdell. Ms. Clerk?
Councilmember Barajas?
Yes.
Blaisdell?
Yes.
Grimm?
Yes.
Harpster?
Yes.
Prowlus?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Milney?
Yes.
And Mayor Serrano?
Yes.
It passes unanimously.
Thank you, Ms. Clerk. With that, we've got item number five, Proclamations and Acknowledgements. There are none listed. We'll move to item number six, Public Comments. The public may address council on any items unless it relates to a scheduled public hearing. This item is provided to allow the opportunity to bring items to the attention of city council or to express an opinion on an issue. Its purpose is not to provide for a venue for debates or for posing of questions with the expectation of an immediate response or resolution. Some questions require consideration by council over time and after a deliberate process with a number of input from a number of different sources. Some questions are best directed to staff who may have access to specific information. Citizen comments will normally be limited to three minutes each by myself. You'll see the clock here to my right. And then those with lengthy messages are invited to summarize their comments or submit written information for consideration by council outside of the formal meetings. When called upon, please provide your name and your city of residence. With that, a public comment is open. Don't, yeah, go ahead.
Mary Mahoney, Pasco resident. Friday night, I couldn't enter a local store without stepping over an unconscious young man, a boy really. He had an empty pizza box for a bed and a sidewalk curb for a pillow. He held his shoes to his chest like a teddy bear. Thursday night, I was in Yakima and I saw the Yakima Aquatic Center with the Yakim, with the YMCA logo on the building. This brings me to Pasco's hugely expensive aquatic center. They could join forces with the Martin Luther King Center, the Boys and Girls Club, that might help young men or really a kid, like I saw on Friday night, as long as, and help with boys and girls locally, provide free rides for the east side kids. And wow, you got your, your wow factor. Your wow factor would be solved. Comments now continue from 10:21:24 regarding RCW 42.56 in addition to permit 404 LID theft, harassment, and retaliation. Eight floodplain American bald eagles killed and the migratory bird treaty act violations. Please provide a pie chart of profits made by Pasco and Hayden Home developers regarding the floodplain developments. Also, the floodplain Riverview East Sewer has ruptured again on 10:24:24. I took pictures. Provide a report, including the Clean Water Act violations. Regarding Tri-City Animal Control, provide the Missing Rainy Day Fund from Tri-City Animal Control employee Angela Zeiler. Clarify, WSU sends shelter animal parts to other facilities. Those records are available. I have them. Provide a list of animal rescues in all animal control facilities that provide dogs and cats to WSU. For lists, call Pasco City Attorney Lee Kerr at 509-735-1542 and WSU President Kirk Schultz at 509-335-4200. Provide the deleted city council meeting on 4/1/19 with Lee Kerr's comments regarding constitutional violations in regard to due process, animal control finances, and WSU contract. Please provide a pie chart of profits made by Pasco by sending dogs and cats to WSU. The over one-half billion CIP budget does not mention a low-cost bayneuter clinic and a no-call, a no-kill animal shelter with no ties to WSU, as well as the Citizens Oversight Committee. Provide funds that are allocated to this effort to a low-cost or a low-barrier homeless shelter for people. See, the Tri-City Herald does an excellent article, 83124. Provide the funds that are, are going to be allocated for that homeless shelter. My comments tonight are for the record and to put Pasco on notice. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional public comment? Mr. Vargas?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Felix Vargas and I reside here in Pasco. I'm very honored to be one of many veterans who on Monday will be, will be honored here in Pasco. The Veterans Day event will again be held at the cemetery. It was our hope that Pasco would have a parade this year to honor the many veterans, past and present, but that was not to be. There were budget considerations and there was also some planning constraints. I have to say this, the, the, the city cemetery is the most appropriate place to honor those who have fallen. It's a Memorial Day event. The, um, the way we honor veterans, past and present, should be in, in a, in a place other than a cemetery. And I'm hopeful that the city will come up with some options on that. I was invited to provide some ideas, which I did on the 16th of October, and we discussed them. I've, I've asked for an update on, on the options we discussed and for assurances that veterans service organizations will be, uh, will be included in any discussions. I thank the city manager for informing me today that indeed we will, will have a reply to, to that request. It's, um, it's important to, for the city to, to honor our veterans, of course, and I know that this, you feel that deeply in, in your heart as well. And so I would ask that you consider issuing appropriate support and guidance to our staff to commence planning at, in a timely fashion and with the right stakeholders at the table so, so that we can, we can do this right. It is very important that our city have the right plan and of course, the appropriate venue to honor all our heroes who have served in uniform. Thank you.
And thank you for your service, Mr. Vargas.
Good evening, Mayor, Council and Staff. Thomas Granbois, Big Mingle Properties, 108 North Fourth Avenue in Pasco. Last week, I had the opportunity to go to the, the Halloween event downtown here at, or at City Hall, and I want to say thank you to city staff. They did a really excellent job. My son doesn't have a large vocabulary yet, but wow was said over and over again. So thank you very much. You guys did a great job and I think it really shows the, the dedication and professionalism that the staff has to, to make great events in, in the city. I also want to talk a little bit about the downtown master plan and to follow up the comments that were made or by, by staff and the consultants last week. If you drive downtown, you'll notice that there are some murals going up. Again, I want to thank staff. That's, it's great to see these things that we've talked around about for a long time are, are making it up there. So again, I want to thank everybody for, thank all the efforts that are put together to executing the master plan, as well as the, the plan to put together security lighting program. It sounds like there was a grant that was possibly maybe secured or, or they're, they're making attempts to do that, to provide security lighting. And I think that that's, we've shown the importance of security lighting and the difference that it can make in the area. So I think providing, uh, that opportunity to, to those businesses is a really big deal. So thank you very much, staff, and of course, council for directing staff to get this done. It's, it's been a long time, but we're getting there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I recognize we have no one in attendance online seeking to submit a public comment. I see, I think one additional non-staff member out there. Do we have any additional public comment? Going once? Going twice? Third? All right, with that, our public comment is up and we'll move on to item number seven, Reports from Committees or Officers. Do you have any such reports from council members? Ms. Barajas?
Thank you. I want to share that on the 30th, I was invited by the Girl Scouts troop that was here for the, um, Pledge of Allegiance a couple of weeks ago. I was invited as a speaker, joined, um, with several other elected officials across the state and was also joined by Congresswoman McMorris Rogers as part of the panel. Basically, we talked about what a council person does and answered questions in regards to roles and education that someone needs to, um, to take or, or have as being an elected official. Enjoyed that hour and a half with the young ladies that participated and also in my capacity as a community advocate and, um, and I'm assuming because I'm, I'm also on council, I was asked to be a speaker for the Big Bro Joe Foundation over the weekend. Foundation brought in over 160 people. This foundation helps kids, minority kids, kids that are from communities that are low income a lot of times. And, um, it's a, it's an organization that provides mentoring, tutoring, and they do activities to help integrate the boys into the community. And so I shared a few words as a single mom and, uh, be, again, being part of the city council. So again, this is a sonic capacity of, um, personal, I guess, not so much as a city council person. But just wanted to share that piece about the Big Bro Joe Foundation. They're always looking for mentors, tutors, coaches. So if you have it in your time, if you have it in your heart, reach out to Joe Thornton, to the foundation, and be part of the community that's helping elevate youth. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barajas, Mr. Grimm.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Real briefly, nothing in my official capacity the last week, but I voted, I dropped off my ballots on the way to the meeting tonight, and I just want to encourage everybody else to do so to, um, you know, it really is a, a privilege to be able to participate in our election system and just encourage all the citizens to do so. Don't put it in the mail, just it has to get handled by a lot of people. Please go straight to one of the election drop boxes or the auditor's office. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grimm. With that, I see no additional lights on this segment. I will echo Mr. Granbois' sentiments of the wow factor. I always enjoy spooky hall. My kids maybe enjoy it more than I do, I don't know. I did have my family here, extended family, my folks, my sister and her kids were there too, and they were all impressed. And so hopefully they'll take it back to their communities and one-up them. Pasco pride can bleed through all the way to California and Tennessee, so I, I think we can, we can go there. So with that, we're going to move on to item number eight, which is hearings and council action on ordinances and resolutions relating thereto. The first one is, uh, well, we have one item, item A. It's a public meeting and resolution number 4518, accepting a notice of intent to commence annex, to, uh, to commence annex Horgan Farms and Cherry Bloom 10% annexation petition. With that, looks like Mr. Raymond, I think you're up.
Thank you very much, Your Honor and council members. Good evening. As mentioned a couple of weeks ago, the annexation process is definitely a multi-step process and, uh, tonight is, is really just the beginning or the kickoff of this project. The owners of the property that constitute the Horgan Farms and Cherry Bloom annexation have filed an intent to petition the city of Pasco to annex the subject property. We do have sufficient signatures to move the project forward for further consideration, which if you recall, represents at least 10% of the value of the, signatures of 10% of the value of the property under consideration. And also, you may recall on October 21st, the city council set this evening's date to receive public comment on the potential proposed annexation. Applicants will also go through, assuming the city council adopts this resolution this evening, applicants will go through the zoning map amendment process where a, a hearing, before the hearings examiner will be held and a recommendation will be made. Subsequent to that process, it will come back to the city council and you'll be asked to provide, uh, final action on an annexation, should it get to that point. The property, next slide, please. The property under consideration is comprised of three parcels located south of Burns Road and east of Shoreline Drive and totals a little over 177 acres. The future land use designation for the properties are medium density and medium-high density residential. Next slide, please. And it's definitely worth noting here, the staff is requesting that the boundaries of the annexation request itself be modified, let's take in the Burns Road right-of-way that is immediately adjacent to the north of the property. And as, that's also referenced in the multiple motion options tonight. Here for any questions? And thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions of staff on this one? Mr. Barajas?
Thank you, Mayor. The question I had was, um, I, I, it was kind of foggy in regards to, he says, um, the end of one of the motions or both of them. And we are simultaneous zoning and the assumption of bonded indebtedness will be required. What, what does that mean?
Yeah, Eric, would you like to help out with that one?
Sure, I was gonna let him, I was gonna let him go at it for a while, but I thought, uh, no. So essentially what that comes down to is, uh, the way the statute is outlined, uh, there's three things that have to happen through this annexation process to either accept, reject, or modify the boundary, then make a decision on whether simultaneous zoning will be a requirement as well, and then finally whether they'll have to assume any bonded indebtedness. And what that essentially means is that, so those are the statutory requirements. One of the nice things about how we typically do these is that we do not, based on our code, we do not simultaneously zone. And the reason why is because as Mr. Raymond was just saying, uh, that's a separate process that the hearing examiner really takes on and, and really is able to, to focus on that. And then that's a separate decision that gets made, uh, downrange. So, uh, and then the other aspect of that, uh, in terms of assuming bonded indebtedness means essentially that would be the same, uh, bonds that that particular area would be subject to as if they were, were in the city with the same locations that, uh, so it's essentially an extension of the boundaries and, uh, the same requirements that anyone who is in the city would have be subject to those bonds. I think the fire districts, all the other ones. So, uh, anyway, so that's where that comes from, uh, but it's kind of a, we kind of break it up so that we have a little more flexibility with regard to zoning.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Harpster?
Uh, yeah, just real quickly, Mr. Raymond, can you confirm that if we were to pass motion B, which includes the Burns Road right-of-way, that wouldn't impact the applicant in any negative way to add that portion?
Thank you. It's a good question. It would not impact them in a negative way. We're merely, um, signifying that we intend to also annex, uh, the right-of-way, but it does not have any impact on the applicants themselves.
Seeing no further comment, public hearing, this, this is, notice is a public meeting under hearing. Just want to, okay. Need for comments on this regardless?
Uh, no, really what it is, it's just a public meeting with the initiators and so you might want to call it and see if they're here tonight and want to speak to it.
All right, just wanted to make sure, because like I said, it was worded a little different.
It is an odd one.
Do the individuals or does the individual who initiated this request, is he or she present or they present? Seeing no response, I'm gonna go ahead and move to Mr. Melony. We got a motion.
Thank you, Mayor. I can start off with motion B. I move to approve resolution number 4518, accepting a notice of intent to commence annexation proceedings for the Horgan Farms and Cherry Bloom annexation, providing a interpretation, determination on the boundary to be annexed, which includes a portion of the right-of-way of Burns Road and whether simultaneously zoning and assumption of bonded indebtedness will be required.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Can we go ahead and do a roll call on this one, just because there are multiple potential motions?
Yes, great. Okay, uh, councilmember Blaisdell?
Yes.
Uh, Grimm?
Yes.
Harpster?
Yes.
Blaisd, I mean, Barajas?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Milney?
Yes.
And Mayor Serrano?
Yes.
It passes.
All right, thank you. With that, that was the only item we had for item eight. We'll move on to item number nine, which is ordinances and resolutions not relating to hearings. We've got item A, which is ordinance number 4736, the 2025 ad valorem tax by Ms. Buckley.
Good evening, council, or mayor and council. Tonight, we're revisiting the ad valorem, our property tax levy topic. If you'll recall, on October 21st, we looked at this, um, in one, in a public hearing along with general fund revenues. And a couple of items that I should point out is there are three options for the budget information that we've gone through over the last couple of weeks. We have included option, excuse me, option C, uh, which is the, uh, new construction value 1% increase, which is our limit. And then the bank capacity, sweeping that bank capacity and, and, um, gathering all that during, in the levy that is issued. So these are the three options and the calculations. Since we looked at this on October 21st, we've received some more information and more detailed information from the Franklin County Assessor's Office. And the important part to point out, and, and I want to highlight to council, is that we've gotten better details about the impact of the TIF areas that are in the cities. Taxing jurisdiction, there are two. One is the one that we talk about frequently or from time to time related to the Broadmoor area. The second is, um, a Port of Pasco tax increment financing area. And so based on those values that the Assessor's Office has provided, um, that makes a little difference in how the taxes are applied and calculated. So you can see that here reflected, um, in the three options. And, um, at the very bottom of the slide, you can see the impact of those three options. We used a $500,000, a home valued at $500,000 and saw or calculated what the impact would be on the rate. So it, it does change as we moved to the right or, um, through those options. The biggest change is an eight cents change between 2024 and what would be the new 2025 is to be a dollar 16 per 1,000 assessed value. And then, um, noting that TIF collection information, it does make a difference on how much revenue actually comes to the city and also how that revenue can be used. The three at the bottom, I guess I'll point out that at the bottom of the page, you can see what the impact as far as revenues are related to property tax through the three options. But, um, a portion of that revenue would go to the port and then the remaining would come to the city. And that, um, pink line is the revenue that would come to the city. Of that revenue, the $98,500 is dedicated to pay that debt service in the TIF area for the transportation projects that, um, are underway. So it needs to be used for that purpose. And, um, that's, these two little pieces of information just reiterate what I said, um, just about the earmark for TIF and, uh, that this, both the port gets and the city gets lessens the dollars available for general government purposes in the general fund. Property tax is approximately 18% of general fund revenues, which supports, as you well know, because we've talked about it a lot, um, many elements, but public safety, parks and facilities, and then the internal departments that support those funds or those, those, um, services. So we're looking for a motion tonight and approval to set the levy. We have to have that done and certified to the Franklin County Assessor's Office by November 30th so they can make plans and then, and, uh, be prepared for next year. And so I open up for questions or discussion?
Thank you. Do we have any questions or councils, or questions or comments for staff? Mr. Melony?
Thank you, Mayor. I know, you know, being on the council for six years, that, uh, obviously we banked this in case, you know, an event arose. Obviously that event is now. I'm definitely not against raising taxes, but also on the same hand, you want to be a good steward of money and also provide for services, whether it be the police, fire department. So in this instance, I would be voting, um, I'm gonna motion for, motion C, um, but you do have my support and I just want to see our city thrive and be able to handle our minimum, or you know, our basic necessities for the city. It's, I think it's very important that we look at the big picture. Again, I hate taxes increase, but, uh, on the other hand, I hate to see any services go down because we can't afford them, because we, we haven't thought this out fully enough. So thanks for the presentation and, uh, I do have my support on this.
Thank you, Mr. Melony, Mr. Grimm.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Buckley, would you be so kind as to just speak to the bank capacity just a little bit? I know we've went over it, but just for the sake of public listening and everything like that, is that basically a, um, a tax that's owed but never collected? Or would you get into the weeds a little bit of that?
Sure.
If you would, please?
We have the legal authority to levy and, or to raise our levy by 1%. So on this chart where you can see, and I don't know, it does work it. This was how the value of the levy in 2024. And so our banked capacity in 2024 was the 13.8 million, almost 900,000. And so, our banked capacity in twenty-twenty-four was the thirteen point eight million, almost nine million dollars. So we left some not collected. It was there available. Should, should we have, the council had said, pick it all up. Um, so now, through these three options, you can see no one percent, which would just cause the bank capacity difference to grow. Um, this second option, there is that one percent being, um, picked up, but not, but only one time, not anything from prior years. And then, in option C, there's the full value of the banked, you know, what we could have collected last year but didn't, being added to the line, um, plus the one percent for this year. Oh, sorry, trying to control that cursor. So, plus the one percent for this year. So, that is where that bank capacity.
So in a sense, they're taxes owed, but that were never actually collected, correct?
We have the, we have the authority to collect them, but had not chosen to do so.
Perfect, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Grim, Mr. Prowls.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so I mean, we're not really getting that much more by taking back our bank capacity. I mean, when you compare that to our deficit, I mean, what, what's the, I guess, revenue impact?
Yes, the difference is, I think about eight hundred thousand dollars. So it's the five, there's five hundred ninety-seven thousand, that's the bank capacity, plus the one thirty-eight. So, I think it's, um, let me look back here, I think I have that number on.
So we're, we're getting our typical revenue stream plus eight hundred thousand dollars.
Right, yeah, which is, um, while not tons of money, it is significant in that that's many, quite a few positions being supported with that, the funding.
Yeah, no, I, before, I mean, I, when we get the agendas, I looked at, okay, what was coming up and, uh, uh, you know, based on paying attention to past, um, budget cycles, um, I, I kinda viewed option C, um, before we even saw in the packet. So, I'd be in favor, um, it's probably not the best time to raise taxes, but, um, given the budget constraints, um, we gotta make the best, um, fiduciary, you know, uh, judgment call and I, I, I would be in favor of option C. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prowls, Mr. Harpster. Okay, so we're, we're good with no lights? Okay, just wanna make sure, um, Mr. Millian?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, I guess I kinda misspoke when I was trying to say is, I'm against taxes overall, I'm very conservative, but I might've said that I am for tax increases. So, I'm against it, but in this particular instance, when it comes to our local community, I am for this particular increase. Again, I do wanna see the well-being of the city. So I just wanna clarify, make sure that I'm not in paper by saying something crazy, but, uh, anyway, thank you.
Don't worry, we'll catch you later. Um, it looks like, uh, that's everything from council. Do we have any public comments on this issue before we have a motion? Going once, twice, third time? Hearing none, Mr. Milne?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt ordinance number four-seven-three-six, providing for a one percent increase plus the banked capacity of four percent in the regular property taxes of the city for levy in twenty-twenty-four and collection in the twenty-twenty-five tax year, preserving levy capacity for future years and providing for related matters and further authorizing publication by summary only.
Second.
Excuse me, um, the agenda packet was updated and, uh, that, there was a phrase that was removed.
Okay, uh, do you wanna, you want my packet?
Sure.
Oops, sorry.
Alright, so, let me do this again. So, I move to adopt ordinance number four-seven-three-six, providing for a one percent increase plus the banked capacity of four percent in the regular property taxes of the city for levy in twenty-twenty-four and collection in the twenty-twenty-five tax year and providing for related matters and further authorize, authorize publication by summary only.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Milne and a second by Ms. Blaisdell. Any further comment by council? Seeing none, um, let's go ahead and do a roll call vote on this one. Oh, wait, sorry, Mr. Prowls? Are you jumping the gun there? Or, okay, sorry.
Alright, uh, Councilmember Grim?
Yes.
Harpster?
Yes.
Brahas?
Yes.
Brahas?
Yes.
Blaisdell?
Yes.
Milne?
Yes.
And Serrano?
Yes.
It passes unanimously.
Thank you. And, and one of the reasons I wanted a roll call there was just, I anticipated, you know, unanimous, unanimous support there. And while we're typically not in favor of increasing property tax, we realize that with some of the economics issues we're dealing with, we're gonna do everything we can to protect the citizen while also ensuring that the city has the ability to operate as needed. So, I'll just give that clarifying comment there. So, maybe I'll end up in the paper for you. With that, item number B, or item letter B, I'll be in the paper for that. Item letter B is, uh, resolution number four-five-one-nine, segregation of local improvement district number one-five-zero assessment. Sticking with you, Ms. Buckley.
Thank you. Um, it is with me and I don't have a presentation. This is kind of, you know, it's kind of a housekeeping, um, true-up that needs to occur related to the local improvement districts. We have two resolutions. Uh, one parcel being subdivided and the assessments related to the local improvement district, um, or LID being divided correctly to those subdivided parcels, um, in Chapel Hill, uh, uh, LID. And then the second resolution has, uh, many parcels being divided and I've, I've, no council's had an opportunity to look at those, but, um, I think there's, it, you'll see as you look at, it goes through numerous iterations of an, uh, uh, original parcel as of the final assessment role being, um, created and then subdividing numerous times. And so we're just making sure that we have the right values tied to the properties that are existing with ownership today and we can, um, uh, pass on those, take care of the accounting and, and the, the billing in the correct fashion and asking for your approval.
Thank you. Uh, do we have any questions or comments to council? Seeing none. Do we have any questions or comments from, uh, public? Going once, twice, three times? Okay, with that, Mr. Milne?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve resolution number forty-five nineteen, relating to local improvement district number one-fifty, providing for the segregation of, uh, assessments for certain parcels referring as the Aesmus Chapel Hill, consistent with RCW thirty-five point four-four point four-one-zero and ratifying and confirming prior acts.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Milne and a second by Ms. Brahas. This one should not require a voice vote or a roll call vote, so we'll just go with a voice vote here. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, sounds like that passed unanimously. And we will move on to item C, which is resolutions number four-five-two-zero, four-five-two-one, and four-five-two-two, segregation of local improvement district number one-five-one, uh, s- assessment. That's, sorry, staying with you. You were there, sorry.
Yeah, no, that's good. This is the same situation, just, uh, different area of town, different LID, it's in the Broadmoor area for the northwest, um, well, maybe not just the Broadmoor area, it's the Northwest sewer extension. And so, we are, uh, dividing out to, uh, the assessments from one too many. And so, requesting that approval to get the accounting and bookkeeping in line with, uh, how they exist today.
Um, do we have any questions or comments from council? With none? Um, I guess, go ahead and stick with the opportunity for comment, but, uh, any public comment going once, twice, third time? Nope. Mr. Milne?
Okay, so, motion number one, I move to approve resolution number forty-five-twenty, relating to local improvement district number one-five-one, providing for the segregation of assessments for certain parcels referred to the, to as Broadmoor, consistent with RCW thirty-five point four-four point four-one-zero and ratifying and confirming prior acts.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second by Miss, Ms. Blaisdell. Any further discussion by council? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes unanimously. Mr. Milne, another one for, for, for forty-five-twenty-one?
Alright, thank you, Mayor. I move to approve resolution number forty-five-twenty-one, related to local improvement district number one-five-one, providing for the segregation of assessments for certain parcels referred to as Barker Estates, consistent with RCW thirty-five point four-four point four-one-zero and ratifying and confirming prior acts.
Second.
Motion and a second by Ms. Blaisdell. Further discussion by council? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, passes unanimously. Let's hear a res- uh, motion for forty-five-twenty-two.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve resolution number forty-five-twenty-two, relating to local improvement district number one-five-one, providing for the segregation of assessments for certain parcels referred to as Rocky Hills, consistent with RCW thirty-five point four-four point four-one-zero and ratifying and confirming prior acts.
Second.
Motion and a second by Ms. Blaisdell for the discussion by council. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Buckley. And that moves us on to item number ten, which is unfinished, unfinished business. We do have one item, which is presentation of the twenty-twenty-five-twenty-six biennial budget. Uh, Mr. Lincoln, looks like it's you.
Thanks, Mayor and Council. Uh, so this evening, we're gonna be hopefully wrapping up the remainder of the presentations regarding the general fund. So we'll run through the CED budget, followed by the Public Works Engineering Budget. We'll do a quick wrap-up from the general fund and then there's the other funds that we're hoping to, to finalize this, this evening. So, uh, with that, we'll get started and happy to answer questions along the way.
Evening, Council and Mayor. Um, I'm here to present the community and economic development, um, budget today, uh, as an interim director and a role that I'm taking on at this time. Uh, and, uh, really grateful to have our deputy director, Craig Raymond, here, uh, who's been a great help during this transition as well. So I'm sure he'll be helping me along, um, as I explain the budgets and our future outlook to you. Overall, the department, uh, is consisted of five different elements, uh, or teams. Planning, development review, permitting, code enforcement, and, uh, CDBG. Uh, you'll see a lot of those elements today, uh, planning, especially regarding annexations. Um, a lot of the, um, actions that you take in council, uh, are, uh, coming from, um, our planning staff. Uh, development review works really closely with all of our developers, the whole team does. Um, and, um, um, essentially helps us develop the city, uh, alongside our development partners. Uh, permitting helps with our building, uh, permits and plan reviews, things like that. Uh, and code enforcement, um, looking at rental licenses that, you know, we had staff come here and talk about, as well as our code enforcement program overall. Uh, and CDBG, which is, uh, the, uh, federal grant program. Uh, one place in motion that you saw CDBG was, uh, the, the street closure with, uh, Louis Street Overpass, uh, and the assistance to the small businesses in that area. Uh, and it was essentially our CDBG administrator, uh, who, uh, helped, uh, us run that program and helped all of the businesses to meet the guidelines of a fairly complex, uh, federal grant. The accomplishments for the last two years for the department, uh, was the residential design standards, uh, street connectivity, uh, billboards, which is very recent. Uh, we also did an impact fee deferral program, which allows for, uh, commercial and industrial. We added that to the list, uh, where they can, uh, defer the impact fee till occupation. Uh, and, uh, public space and mobile vending, which is something our partners at Framework and our partners in, uh, downtown Pasco have been working with us, um, and something that we heard, heard about earlier. Uh, public arts and mural, murals, um, Broadmoor Master Plan, which is extremely important for us, uh, as we're moving forward, uh, in terms of attracting new businesses to the, to the community as that area essentially represents a pretty big piece of, uh, commercial land that is available, uh, with all of the utilities and transportation network. Um, also, we changed downtown Pasco overlay district. That takes a lot of the restrictions away from what kind of businesses can be in downtown, um, residential building capacity for ADUs and the missing middle housing, uh, which were kinda known in the, in the state for being some of the leaders for the, uh, for this kind of work. Um, and small business relief program, I just mentioned that, uh, as well as implementation, uh, 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 creation and implementation of the downtown master plan. Uh, we're going to be continuing, uh, our work with the implementation as council has directed, uh, in the last, um, presentation that we had. Um, and with that, these are the people who are going to, who have done all of this work and will be helping us accomplish some of your major goals, uh, in the future as well. Uh, we have, um, like I mentioned, our, uh, CED director, which is a vacant position at this time. Uh, our deputy CED director, who's here with us today, uh, and many of the staff that you've probably met, uh, at the city hall or at times when they are presented to you here at the council chambers. Uh, this is the organizational chart at this time. Uh, we also have a presentation coming later in the evening and you'll hear about some of the changes that we're planning to make, not necessarily to the org chart, but we're looking into how best we can serve our customers. And so we expect few changes on how we operate and how we're structured. Uh, this is the historical staffing of, of the department. Um, we have, um, added some positions. You'll see a big jump between twenty-nineteen and twenty-twenty. That is not necessarily the department adding all of those positions, but more of a restructuring of the development review team, uh, from the Public Works Department to the CED Department. Uh, and we've added some positions in this biennium, about four of them. Um, and we're looking to reallocate one position, um, from the city manager's office to this team, um, as a part of our effort to identify where the greatest need is, um, and be able to kinda shift positions as we need. Uh, this is the expense history, um, for the department. As you can see, um, it has climbed over the years. Some of it is more, um, in line of those eight positions and all of the expenses that come with it. Um, it didn't, um, because of when that transfer happened, um, we did not move all of the expenses exactly with the people, uh, because we already had, uh, a biennial budget that was set at that time. But you'll see that jump in twenty-twenty-one, which is essentially that next biennium where we had caught up with that restructuring. Uh, and, um, overall, what you will see in this expense budget, uh, are some of the things that we have planned for, um, and any other, um, tasks and goals you would like for us to add to it. Um, our major goals for the next two years are updating our traffic impact fee, uh, which you heard about last week. Our goal is to, um, have that new impact fee updated or adopted by end of March. Uh, we're also looking into SEPA threshold changes, which we will talk about later tonight. Um, and that is something that we're planning to bring to you at the end of this month. Um, and, uh, we're working on our ordinances to be able to make those changes. Um, and there's also traffic impact analysis process change that is badly needed. Uh, we're hoping to bring that to you alongside SEPA, which would be ideal. Um, but to be frank with you, I'm not quite sure if I'm going to be able to deliver on that. Uh, but we're definitely hoping to get that to you either the first week of December, uh, and if not, then the first week of January. That is our goal, uh, to bring the TIA process changes to you. Uh, we would also like to work on simplification of fees. Uh, you will hear, uh, later, uh, that we are talking about predictability, uh, clarity, uh, and, uh, excellent customer care. And so, um, simplification of fees is really important, um, if we're sending ten invoices and there's not an understanding of when those invoices will end, even if they're smaller dollar amounts, it feels a lot because you're adding anxiety and uncertainty to that process. Um, so we're looking to see, uh, what, what is the best structure? Uh, we've gotten, uh, feedback from our partners. Um, so we have a pretty good idea on what, uh, what the structure is needed, but we still need to do some work on our end. Our hope is to get that to you, uh, hopefully by, uh, sometime in January, for sure. Um, and, uh, there's also a new state law that we have to abide by. Uh, we believe that, uh, staff meets, uh, the state law requirements for most projects. Um, there's some, uh, that are highly complex that maybe we've not. Um there's some uh that are highly complex that maybe we've not met in the past. So we're not highly concerned about not being able to meet some of the timelines and again, we'll be talking about it later tonight. Uh but uh we do have some requirements to track and be able to report some of those K P I's. Which is great because those are things that we can report to council as well, once we start collecting and so you'll be able to see. Uh the speed or uh with which we're able to serve our customers in this area. Um there's also implementation of an online application, tracking and payment system. Uh these are things that will take any time between six to eighteen months to deliver. Uh and then, of course, um. Uh we do have some major changes to codes that is needed. Um and we'll talk about that later tonight. Um we do have good processes, but we have codes that. Require changes to uh to meet the uh meet the needs of a growing city. So that will be a lot of work, not just on staff, but on council as well, as you see a lot of those co- codes come through. For discussion and approval. Uh we're also looking to restructure the department to truly create a central development center, so that's going to be a pretty big effort. Um our goal is to create some capacity with staff. Uh with uh changes, some key changes, especially the C P A, T I A, simplification of fees. Uh and as we create more space and capacity within staff, we'll be working on some of the. Uh other items like the development of the uh of the uh creation of the central development center. And with that, I'm open for any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments, Mister Grim?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Just just a couple of comments. One, I appreciate your vision and direction. Um just a couple of the things you said, I typed in here, um uncertainty and anxiousness and trying to remove that from the process. For, you know, the developers and the stakeholders, I think will go just a long way and just such a great, you know, gesture of. I I don't wanna say goodwill, because as you said in another sentence, serving our customers, that that's, you know. The way we should treat them is lo- long as we continue to speak that way and talk that way, you know, hopefully we'll live by that too and. Just become um, you know, just more service oriented all the time. So again, I appreciate your leadership, your vision, your direction and. Everything I'm hearing is exactly what I want to hear and so, bravo, just, yep, keep up the good work and please execute. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mister Grim. Mister Prowse.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the presentation. Um a lot of those products, um I really liked the the content there. So really appreciate that um in line with um some of the uh comments I made uh meeting two ago. I wanna talk to talk about, you say you were shifting, or the city is looking to shift a full-time employee. Um from the city manager's office to the C E D department. What exactly would that person be doing?
Uh they would be working in our uh development uh services team. Uh as uh a lead development services tech.
Okay.
Um we only have, um we used to have just two development services tech. Um we added an additional one, uh but really, there's a lot of workload there that requires additional people, so. Um as council had added the positions in the last biennium, we've looked at um where they truly are. Most needed and this is a reallocation that we did based on that need and analysis.
When you look at the projects that um looks like the C D department's gonna undertake, do you feel like we have the appropriate amount of personnel? For this or I I I'm not looking to add more to the budget, I mean, we don't we don't got any money, but thing is, I'm trying to say is. If you had a look at it, how many more for full-time employees would you need to kinda make it work, you know?
That is a really hard question, because I think I would have different answers as different hats that I put on over the years at the city. Uh here's what I will say, uh is that there there are certain things that we need to do before we ask for more people. Uh because you can add more bodies and that will not create a better process. Uh we. Do I think we need more people? Yes, but at this time, it is more prudent. Uh to work on some of these things and see where we land. Um do I believe it will still require more people to serve our people, uh our residents and our develop- development community? Appropriately, probably, uh but at this time, there's a lot of work that we need to do on this arena. Uh what I would ask of council is um is give us some time to get the get the immediate fixes going. Uh which will create a little bit of a breathing room for staff and then allow us to kinda work through. Uh some of these items in the next two years, a- and I think we'll make really good progress and. That'll probably give us a good idea on not just how many people we need, but what are the positions that we need. Because that might completely change the way that we do business.
Thank you, and one last comment. Um I'll just say, you know, these are um, a- as you said, complex. Issues and and a lot of stakeholder need to provide stakeholders need to provide comment and and all that. I would I would just say. You know, I would I would like for this stuff to get done quicker, but at the same time, um let's just try and get it right. Let's take the time, um not too much time, um it's a balance, but uh you know, if this is a lot of undertaking, a lot of stuff. That I think many developers and and people wanted to get done, but let's just try and get it right, create a good foundation. And then um so that we're able to look after this these two years, see what we gotta do to shore up on the staff side, cuz I I'd hate to do. Uh get this stuff just out there, you know, we're we're trying to meet these benchmarks, but then the the quality and the customer service isn't there, so. Those are just my comments. Thank you for the and thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, Mister Prowse. Um I I think I'll echo some of those sentiments, you know, I I I appreciate the energy that's gone into this, I think. Making sure, I I appreciate what you've said, Ms. Sagdel, about uh filling an extra body may not be our right answer. Ensuring that we've got the right processes, technologies, those sorts of things in place, you know, let's let's, I think, make sure that we've. Got it situated properly and then if we need to fill extra seats, and then certainly something you guys can come back to council with. For some sort of amendment or budgetary request down the road, but I do appreciate looking at um. Some of the structural modifications to ensure that we're able to service the customers, so. Um I see no further lights. With that, it looks like you're off the hook for now. Next up, Ms. Sarah.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. And similarly to what you saw for other departments, we're gonna focus on public works. And we're follow the same framework that you've seen in other presentations. But I wanted to take an opportunity before we focus on general fund to talk about public works as a whole. So public works is a. Department with two divisions, one of those is engineering and the other one is operations. So uh what do we do in public work? So public works is led by the public works director and a deputy public works director. There is a support team that involves administrative services along with financial analyst and a procurement specialist. And then during, within the division for engineering, there's an engineering manager that is focused with her team. On the delivery of capital projects, funding pursuit, funding administration, long-range planning. Traffic engineering and environmental compliance work. On the operations side. Uh there is the treatment plant operation, the maintenance and um. And upkeep of roadways and utilities, as well as emergency response, including uh winter response. And we will be focusing on engineering in the rest of this presentation, but it was worth mentioning. That the department is bigger than just engineering and um a lot of the activities this department develops are not within the general fund. And they're funded through utilities and specific uh funds like street funds, arterial funds, overlay and so on. So what does operation do? We talked about it, there's some pictures, there's safety meetings and uh preparation for winter. Working in the streets and utilities. And then in the engineering side, um a little bit more office focused, although we have inspectors. Uh you're seeing some of the work products, plan sets, and bids and work happening in the streets and coordination between the different staff members. So focusing now on just engineering, again, this is one division within. The public works department, you are seeing the public works director and deputy director are only partially funded, that's why they're in a different color. Partially funded through general fund and within the engineering department, there is uh staffing for. Engineers, project managers, support staff, including engineering technicians and then inspectors. Our construction manager is actually not funded within the engineering group, is actually in the C E D department. Um but we'll get to his role. And then again, the traffic engineer position is also within engineering. And and I would say, this is the number of people in that department, which comes into play when we look at the accomplishments. One uh mention here is we did not include the environmental compliance team, which is two people at this time. Uh they are funded through utilities, so it wasn't really relevant to the discussion on general fund, so they are excluded, but they report to that engineering manager at this time. Okay, so now we can look at the accomplishments in the last biennium. So this team has delivered fifty five projects. Uh we have currently sixty six active projects that are underway in different stages. So that's not counting the ones that have been already closed out, part of those fifty five. Um we have spent a hundred and seventy million between the beginning of twenty twenty three to date. We anticipate the overall expenditure in capital delivery will be in the order of two hundred million by the end of the year. We've applied for twenty three, uh I say we, but it's really the engineering team. I'm just used to talking as we, since I was part of engineering until the beginning of this year. So this team has applied for twenty three funding opportunities, both loans and grants. Some of those are have not been uh awarded yet, it's unknown if we will receive them, but. We have received just under thirty million dollars in loans and grants in this biennium. Uh we have regained compliance in our reimbursement requests, timeliness with D O T and F H W A. And that was very important, because otherwise we would have been jeopardizing future awards and existing awards, so that was very important. And in part, we were able to do so by adding a position that was focused on financial. Analysis and financial tracking of projects in the last biennium. Um we have completed audits for our projects, this is standard work, but it's worth mentioning what we do. Uh we've held public meetings related to uh big plans, which the engineering group prepares and helps. Uh solidify both on schedule, scope, cost. Um and justification for those projects based on long-range planning work that has been performed as. Well, as uh increased visibility of the work and um, for example. Disruption to traffic or upcoming projects, outreach events and so on, so that is increased. Uh work that has been performed with a focus on communication in this last biennium. So this engineering team really ties to two of the um. Goals council has set up and both are quality of life and the transportation network. And um it's self-explanatory, quality of life talks about investment and reinvestment in infrastructure, that's exactly what this that team does. And then transportation network, uh a whole component of the engineering delivery has to do with traffic, but also with transportation projects being delivered and planned. Historical staffing, and this ties to the previous presentation where you see that is pretty consistent, the level of staffing, except for. In uh two thousand twenty, there was a reorganization that moved staff from the public works engineering department onto. C E D department. Um. You are seeing that some of those positions were then added as time went by to support the level of. Um needs for capital project delivery. And of course, this ties to the other slide that we showed with the people in there and you can see that the construction um manager. Was part of the public works engineering team, then moved to C E D, is no longer budgeted in this team. And so let's let's talk about this slide. This is uh cost for, so operating cost for the engineering division within public works. And um the biggest expenditure here are those golden bars that are the staffing. Uh salaries and benefits. Something to pay attention to that is specific to engineering. Is that every billable hour for this team, that is billable meaning is being used towards a project, gets then reimbursed. By either the utility or fund that is being benefited by. Or the funding source that is being um utilized for that project. So projects with grants. We get reimbursed the hours and benefits spent by each team member in that project, so this. Budget, as shown here, identifies the authority to spend those hours during the project. But most of the time does not result in cost for the general fund, because it's eventually reimbursed. There is a component of it, though, there is an overhead rate for each hour spent in a project that is um. Certainly paid by those utilities or or funds that are benefited, and we'll talk about that process a little bit later as part of our. Improvement process. So you're seeing that um. Prior years up until twenty thirty four, we've been living with uh some vacancies. Uh we anticipate some vacancies to remain that way for the next biennium, but our budget doesn't reflect that reduction. So you're seeing that increase in those golden lines are in part a reflection of um the vacancies that were. Actuals, right, for those prior budgets. And that has been the case, I can tell you with certainty since twenty twenty, when I became a manager for engineering. Um we had not had full staffing at any point, so we've been operating with some vacancies since. So, understanding that now is the time to be frugal, we have already implemented some measures. And some of those have been to pool resources within the department, some of the positions within the department, as I explained before, are not funded through general fund. And we are joining forces specifically on the administrative side of things to allow for one position that became vacant to remain vacant. And have some savings. Uh we have pooled resources when it comes to vehicles, for example, we have no longer. Assigned vehicles within the team and we have pulled those so that they're readily available for those that need to use that vehicle. Avoiding the need to have more vehicles replaced or added to our to our um resources. And so what have we reduced? We've reduced overtime, printing, which um. It's counterintuitive, because it helps us review things, but uh there was there was some level of saving that could be had, so unless it's absolutely necessary, we're not printing. Unless it's absolutely necessary, we're not printing in color. We have also offered a voluntary program to forego. Uh city issued cell phones. I'm trying it out, it's working out for me, others are tempted to try it out as well. Training and travel has been reduced, it hasn't been eliminated, but certainly reduced, and then vehicle replacement program is also. Um ex- extended, and this is consistent with all the other presentations you've seen. What services do we think will be reduced as we continue to be um in this frugal mode? So we plan to tackle fewer projects and this is both eh. Result on need to be frugal and avoid overtime, but also because the amount of work this team has done in the past five years. Is unsustainable with this level of staffing. Uh this team has caught us up with needs that were um. Long eh ha- had had a long time coming, have delivered projects that were what we call legacy projects that had been in the books for a very long time. But now is the time to reassess what can be sustainably delivered without running everybody into burnout. So, fewer projects, some extended timelines, so that we can allow for the few staff that are delivering projects to have reasonable timelines. And ability to to do a more thorough job on those projects that are being delivered, have time to review, have time to provide answers. Um, non-essential functions, we would like to to reduce those that happen to be uh ones, one-offs. Or things that are not our specialty. And uh consolidated outreach events, to make the most of the time we're spending, especially if it's after hours. Uh spending that time in the most productive way possible. What will not be impacted? Um as always, the quality of our work, our commitment to safety. Uh and strategic approach to funding, so although I'm reading this slide, uh you understand, we pursue grants and loans. That we think we have a high chance of being successful and and that is cost effective for the city and has proven to be a good strategy. So what's coming for the next biennium? So some process improvement, I briefly mentioned. So some process improvement, I briefly mentioned eh overhead costs for each hour used in a project. There's other departments that support our department when we're trying to deliver projects. And so that process currently is uh very manual and labor-intensive. We want to take a step back and look at how can we still be paying for that overhead to support the other departments that support our department in a manner that doesn't require as much hours of work, both for us and other departments like finance. So we will be evaluating what is the best way to approach that. Uh, we have identified another area where there is a lot of manual and labor-intensive processes, which is the documentation for projects. Documentation for projects is necessary, it's mandatory, we need it for our grant compliance, but there may be tools that we can choose. We may not be able to implement it in the next biennium, but certainly choose and identify what processes could we implement to make this less time-consuming and then being able to deliver more with the same amount of people. Um, we've heard council uh ask for regular review fees and rates. So that is now part of our goals. Um, we, we have been doing some rate increases, fees certainly needs to be looked at. So that is part of our key goals, along with stronger prioritization projects. And really what we're focusing on is avoiding rework. Rework is um not the best use of our time. So we want to make sure that we're doing things right, aligned with the vision and delivering those um in, in a one effort instead of repeated efforts of iterations. And then the deliverables, this is a short list of projects. There's actually a much longer list, I didn't bring it with me, but you pass the CIP that has a lot of projects planned for the next biennium. What I tried to represent here is both studies and uh projects, along with a variety of what type of projects they are. There's anything from utilities, any utility, water, sewer irrigation, storm, uh PWRF or transportation projects, and then planning level documents like the water con plan, a comprehensive uh roadway safety action plan. And most of these projects are in some stage of uh work already.
Or have received funds so that we can deliver them, like the last one, the payment preservation. And with that, I am sure there are some questions in all my talking, so I'm happy to address those.
Thank you for that wonder, wonderful presentation, Mr. Rem. You have some.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I, I do, yes, I just want to say, Ms. Sarah, um thank you, what a fantastic year. What a whirlwind for you. I mean, when I first, you know, got involved here, it was all Mr. Worley and he kept introducing you. And here you are at the helm and you've just accomplished so much. I mean, you, you should be, you know, really proud going back and looking at that list there. Fifty-five projects delivered, sixty-six underway. Um, just all the grants and loans you've received, really on behalf of the city of Pasco, thank you. And one of the things that stood out to me that you said was, you know, fe- fewer projects, you know, coming up. And I tell you what, the community may appreciate that, because, you know, a lot of people feel this whole city's ripped up right now. But it, it's a good thing, we're a growing city and I think you've done a great job of managing it with the communication team. I think we've gotten the word out better than ever, so just really thank you so much for all your work, really, really appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Rem. Uh, seeing no fully lights, I do want to recycle one of your comments, which is that paragraph of the big wins, big costs. And, you know, we, we do applaud the work that your organization does. And, and all organizations, it just seems that yours is consistently funding not only the projects. You know, we get so many complaints about so many roads torn up, but hey, guess what? Better to do it today rather than five to ten years down the road when it's too late. Um, but on top of that, not just funding the actual work, but the in-house work. As you mentioned, getting it a dollar for dollar on some of those grants. I mean, we're offsetting costs, so it's a, it's a net benefit. And uh, you know, you always want to run a lean organization, an efficient organization. And we appreciate that you're able to do that. And again, I, I realize that other parts of this organization are able to accomplish similar things. But certainly you guys bring a lot of money in-house and make Pasco, while it may be painful while the roads are torn up together. Once they're done, they're done, hopefully for quite some time. And we're setting the, the tone to be able to um accommodate the growth that we're projected to see over the next fifteen years, so thank you. Um, that's, oh, Mr. Rem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just one last thing, yes, all of the things you said, Mr. Mayor. And I just wanted to say on top of all the listed accomplishments, you still took the time to take me on tours, meet with me, answer all of my questions and immerse me into your world. So again, thank you so much.
Thank you, appreciate that. Next, we've got the general fund budget overview, looks like Mr. Lincoln's light on, so wherever it goes from there, we'll see.
I'll, I'll handle this one as best I can. Uh, thanks, Mayor and Council, so just kind of a quick wrap-up. You want to go to that? There we go. Um, so that, that's it for the general fund presentations. The other, the other funds that we're going to present are, are outside of the general fund and we'll, we'll have uh Ms. Buckley handle those in, in just a moment. But wanted to just kind of do a quick recap of where we are and then if there's any general feedback from, from council, um, we can, we can look at that. Um, one, one of the exercises that we, we did at the beginning of the budget and, and subsequently, um, council had asked sort of if, if uh where would the budget be if we kind of added the, the employees and the things that we, we may have wanted to ask. And um, I think that was a good exercise to, to go through for, for both us and, and hopefully for council. Where, where we started with the budget before we started to kind of pare down and get to the, the numbers that are on the screen here, the uh even, even spending out of the reserve. In twenty twenty-five, even without a staff increase, we started the budget process with our, our leadership team at about a twelve and a half million dollar deficit in just twenty twenty-five. And we knew that wasn't going to be something that we wanted to live with. And certainly that wasn't going to be something that we wanted to present to, well, anybody, um, let alone the, the city council. And, and so that was, that was the starting point. More recently, we went through and said, okay, if there were, if, if there was a, a magic wand that we could wave and we had the, the personnel in, in certain departments, and not, not everyone participated as, as well in this, this exercise. But we, we got up pretty quickly to a, a little over twenty-two million dollars out of reserves in just twenty twenty-five if we added a significant portion of, of personnel to the budget. So um, while, while it's uncomfortable and, and we certainly appreciate you um considering the budget that's proposed for you, um, we, we started at a more significant um place. And, and it took a lot of work and dedication from, from our, our leadership team and, and their managers and their, their frontline employees to get a budget that's, that's before you today. I think over time, that just kind of happens in, in any organization where you add things to the budget, you forget to take things out, or because you've lived with those things for so long, you just leave them in there. Um, we, we didn't have that luxury with this budget. And it's, as, as Ms. Sigdell said at the beginning of this process, it's, it's a good time to hit the reset. It's a time to look at what do we absolutely need, what do we not need in the budget? And how can we present something that still delivers a, a high-quality level of service to our taxpayers, to our residents? Um, but do so in a way that hopefully is, is living up to those, those fiscally conservative values that, that we represent, uh both on the elected side and on the staff side. So just a quick few things on here that I, I wanted to touch upon. The bottom line is that in twenty twenty-five, we would foresee spending four point four million out of reserves. And in twenty twenty-six, five point four million out of reserves. But that's not without considering a few things that we need feedback from council on. So um, one, the budget currently doesn't include the cost of living adjustment. So you'll see those under the additional items. Uh, additionally, we're, we're very sure of ourselves that we can make a further impact on the, the labor portion of our budget by um a few tools. We have either incentivized retirements for, for some. Um, and, and also just looking at leaving certain positions open, especially as we, we see them coming open, um, being much more critical of what positions we, we fill within the budget. So that's the uh labor adjustment line that you'll see there. And the next one is the vehicle replacement deferment. So this would be looking at around half of our fleet. And instead of, instead of doing the replacement on the schedule that they've been on, probably kicking the, the can down the road a little bit on, on some of that fleet. In that process, we'll also conduct an analysis of what is the right timing for, for certain vehicles. We, we have a lot of vehicles in our fleet that are beyond just uh, you know, the, the police vehicles that you see on the road or even the, the fire apparatus that you see out there. Um, there's a lot of uh trucks, um lawn mowers, uh cars that we use for back and forth between different sites. And, and I think it's a, another good time to do a further evaluation to those, those parts of our fleet and see if we need to replace them on the cycle that we have been replacing them on. Next slide, please. And so first of all, I'd say thank you to the council for seriously considering the, the, the first item on there. I, I know very well that's not something that you voted um unanimously on with, without a great deal of, of thought behind that. I know that's not something that's an easy vote to take, but we, we certainly appreciate you um having seriously considered that and, and taking that step tonight, so we, we appreciate that. Um, the other items on here, I think we've, we've covered. The additional items at the, the bottom really pertains to the um, the, the, the cola, the um potential for some other things from the state like LNI increases, uh healthcare increases, things like that, that uh we may not have a, a fine pencil um number at, at this point. Um, throughout the presentation of the general fund, you, you've heard a lot about the, where, where the revenues could be and, and hopefully those come to fruition. We're, we're obviously being very mindful of supporting the projects out in Broadmoor and other economic development projects that are happening throughout the city. Um, those are how we're going to make up the lost ground that we have at this time. That's a huge investment from the city in the Broadmoor area. And um the, the sooner that we're seeing a, an ROI in that area, the, the sooner we can hopefully present yeah happier budgets to you all that, that you can, you can be prouder of. You, you heard that we have a uh just a, a starting point deficit when it comes to our, our cities across the water. Uh, with, with Kennewick having about a ten million dollar um difference per year and, and Richland having about a four million dollar rich uh difference per year in their uh tax base. So to provide the level of service that we provide and to be even somewhat on par with those two, I think is something that we should all be proud of, that we've, we've really tried hard to try and keep up with those across the river with, with being in a different uh financial position than they are. We also talked a little bit about some of the, the potential uh revenue enhancement options that you can take a look at going into twenty twenty-five. Um, the first one being a public safety levy lid lift, second one being a, a transportation benefit district of some sort. And the third one being a Metropolitan's Park District. I think that it would be beneficial to at least learn more about those options in, in twenty twenty-five uh for you to consider, I think as Chief Roski had highlighted. Uh, even, even if we added a few positions to his budget this year, he'd still be considerably behind over the course of the next couple of biennium compared to where we are with the growth of the city. Uh, and of course, his department isn't the only one that's, that's going to experience that over, over that period. And then I, I think lastly, just pointing out that there's, there's obviously a need to provide um more uh and, and deeper level of, of information to the city council when it comes to the budget. So making sure that those quarterly budget updates to you all is, is something that's meaningful, that you feel you're able to make decisions based on them and it's not just merely uh checking a box and making sure that you have the, the tools that you need to, to make the decisions that you need to do as, as the legislators for the, the city of Pasco. So with that, that's our, our portion of the budget presentation that is dedicated to the general fund. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any at this time.
Mr. Prowse.
Thank you, Mayor, I'll go ahead and start it off. Um, no, I really appreciate all the presentations, they've really illuminated um the state that we're in. I, I would just say, um, I think we made a good decision with um the levy lift today for property taxes. Um, but I will just say this, that um, I, I'm glad to hear the word reset. I think that's a good word to use. Uh, but we just need the information when we need it sooner. I, I went back and looked at the last biennium, um city council meetings. And I'm not going to say it was glossed over, but it kind of was. Um, it was just, oh, hey, you know, you saw there's a difference here and, but we're going to keep on spending. I don't think that's a good habit um as a city we need to keep on doing. So I'm, I'm glad to hear that this will be a reset. I, I hate um not being able to continue to grow, add staff to certain departments, but we will do what we have to do to ensure that we are good on, uh, we are in a good financial footing going forward. Um, but I, I would just like to see the information um sooner. I think if we knew that we're looking at twelve million dollar deficit, I, I think this council would have redirected us to save some of that money this past year or then spend it in certain places. So i- if I can leave you guys with this or staff, just when you need information, you feel like the forecasts aren't looking as rosy, let us know, let's talk about it. Um, if we have to have more updates rather than quarterly, let's do it. Let's be transparent about it and if we need to tighten the, the bell a little bit on some projects and wait, then let's do that. Um, because some of us may not be here in a year, two years, four years. And we, you know, I would like for us to at least, at least do that, be good um stewards of our public tax dollars, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Prowse. Um, uh, Mr. Harpser.
Yeah, the, the last bullet point there, additional items not included, is that referring to the few items above that?
Okay, yeah, al- along with something like i- if, if we had an increase from the state, say like LNI or, or some, something that we had to include, we want to make sure that we just have the, the flexibility to cover those things in the budget. There shouldn't be anything that's a significant cost, but still, there's curveballs that happen. And then of course, all this gets manually entered and we want to make sure we're as accurate as possible.
Okay, I would just, my opinion on those few then is, is yes to deferring vehicle replacement, yes to reducing full-time employees for vacancies and then um yes to adding the cost of living increase. Um, I mean, it's a really tight job market right now, so I don't think we'd have a huge exit of employees, but I do think it's important that we take care of the ones that we have. Um, wh- you know, with what we can do, especially given the uh climate of the, climate of the economy right now.
Thank you, Mr. Harpser. Mr. Lincoln, uh, the reduction of FTEs through the vacancies, do you foresee that having a direct impact on our customers, customer-facing um portions of the entity? Or where, where do you see that mostly impacting us?
I, I think because we're going to be fairly cautious about which positions we would fill and not, I, I don't anticipate it being a, a, a major impact on customers. I, I think as, as Ms. Sigdell alluded to earlier as well in her presentation, um, customer service is something that we really are going to strive to, to emphasize, but we have to clean up our processes first before we can um talk about what the right number of, of people are. So I think this is a controlled way to um get to a number that, that makes it a little bit better budgetarily, but also in a way that allows us to make sure that we're uh providing the key functions that the city needs to be providing. So I, I would say no, I don't foresee there being a, an issue there, Mayor.
Okay, do you see this being a, having a high risk of burnout on it? I mean, obviously there may be a one-off or employee or something of that, but I mean, the general uh sense, I, I, I know that staff, we want to be supportive of staff. Hopefully we've uh been clear about that, if not, we want to be supportive of staff. Um, but also we want to be mindful if we are to not reallocate positions or you weren't. Um, do you foresee that impacting or increasing a, a level of burnout or anything of that nature? I mean, and again, I'm not looking for one-offs, uh, but just generally speaking.
Yeah, I, I think what I would say is if, if we tried to keep providing the same level of, like if, if Maria kept providing the same number of projects that, that you're seeing today, yes, there would be burnout pretty quickly. That is a high-performing team that is uh really, really getting to the projects. But I, I think this is a time to um sort of piggybacking on, on what Mr. Prowse said, just to, to, i- if there's a chance that we don't need to do that project right now because of budget or because of a number of staff, we will make sure that council is well aware of that. And, and I think the, I, I don't love the motto of doing less with less, but let's clean up our processes. Let's take a couple of years to really make sure we're doing things right, doing them well. Um, not being slow with getting those implementations in, but being thoughtful and, and, and doing the right things. And um hopefully we'll avoid the, 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 the burnout. If, if we try to do the same level of work that we're doing today with fewer people and without strategy, yes, we'd have burnout, we'd have a lot of personnel issues. But I, I think we can do this in a way that is still positively impactful for our residents.
Okay, and then I guess uh the last couple of things, um, do you foresee, I, I guess this is more of like a sort of rhetorical or theoretical question that I'm posing. Do you see a way in which uh council may be able to assist in that partnering um so that we can avoid that burnout? And again, I don't want to put you on the spot to give that answer right now, but I guess I'm lofting that out there. It's like, if this is where we're going to potentially go and if some of the restructuring happens, how is it that council can be actively engaged in that conversation and those processes so that it's not, um, again, we don't want this to be like a hostile or adversarial thing from council of, hey, just drop the dollars and, you know, cut the heads as needed. We want it to, to be as much of a partnership as possible, realizing that that's what it's going to look like, right?
I, I think the more, um, the more information sharing both ways, I, I think clarity. I, I think the more, the more information sharing both ways, I, I think clarity of, of direction that council's looking for is very important. Uh, I think as you're hearing from your constituents, as you're hearing from residents, the things that they're, they're looking for. Sharing those with, with myself is, is critical so that staff is on the same page, but it, it needs to be an honest conversation of what's doable and what's not. So frankly, I think there's going to be times where you're going to have to tell residents, yeah, we'd like to do that. It's not going to happen immediately or it's not going to happen today. That's not to say it's not important, it's not on the list, but I think being reasonable with, with some of those timelines of when we can get to things. If everything's a priority, then nothing's a priority. So we have to be really careful about what truly are the priorities. And you guys here, I mean, we're in the days, days of, I know she's got one, but most of you have two of these, right? So, uh, and other devices. So you're, you're very accessible. And I think just being able to respectfully push back at times on the things that are doable and what's not doable are, are a, a good start. And that's not to say again, that you don't want to show the, the ROI for the public or for your constituents, but there's just certain things that this is the first priority, then we'll get to that, that other thing. It, it's sort of like when we do our snow removal plans, we hit the main, main roads first and eventually we'll get to all of the neighborhoods, but we have to hit the, the things that are the, the main access points first and, and then get the rest of it. So I, I think just being cognizant of that and the more that we can have this kind of a dialogue of, of what we're trying to get to is, is the best thing. So the more that it's a free back and forth. The more that everyone understands it's, it's one city, we're all on the same team and you guys are at the, the tip of that spear, I, I think the better for all of us.
Perfect. Then one last quick question. On the vehicle replacement. Does that contemplate if there's anything really on its last leg that we really need to replace? Like I'd hate for us to not budget it and then someone's broken down or we're not mowing grass for two weeks. Or even worse, we're borrowing stuff from across the river.
Yeah, we won't be borrowing anything with someone else's logo on it, that's for sure. No, no, I, I think really what it's going to look at is, is probably some options that we've looked at before, which include leasing and things like that, that we've, we've seen significant savings in going through those routes. PD particularly has, has gone that route before and seen some wins doing that. So no, if there's an immediate need for a vehicle, it is not going to preclude us from, from getting that. And we're seeing a, a return to access to some of the fleet that we, we weren't able to get to before. And a lot of that is also just the relationships that we have with some of our local dealers as well. So no, if there is a, a need to get someone to, to, to do their job, we will make sure that they have the ability to do that.
Thank you. I appreciate that and I see no further lights. Um, you know, with that, I think there's some takeaway from this side of the table. I appreciate that open and honest feedback to us and hopefully we'll keep that and bear that in mind when we do get feedback from constituents or we hear things from you, if we feel the need to push back, we'll do so, you know, quick, quickly and transparently. With that, again, seeing no further lights on that element, we're going to move to the internal service funds. Back to Ms. Buckley.
Good evening again, Councilman Mayor. We are looking at internal service funds next and internal service funds are kind of mini businesses that are run to support the other fund of the, funds of the cities or city. They supply goods and services to utilities, the general fund and the different funds that I'll talk about later. They are run on a cost, a break even cost recovery basis, not, there's no profit built into the fee or the revenue that they earn from the other funds. And using internal service funds help us to have a long-term planning horizon. A good example is that replacement savings for vehicles. And consistency of accounting and reporting and services across the city. And finally, it, the billing reflects actual cost of services and running, let me start over there. Because of the inter-fund billing, the cost of providing a service in the general fund in a given department is accurately reflected. So we'll move first into the equipment, operations and maintenance fund. This fund provides repair and maintenance and to for vehicles and equipment. They purchase supplies, including things like automotive parts and tires and fuel. And then also provide repair services, be either preventative services or repair to, for broken vehicles or equipment. And it would be considered the, the city shop. If you heard, hear those, that term, this is the city shop, providing work to other departments. We are going to look in 2025 at that rate that's applied to work that's done in the shop to make sure that it's keeping pace with the costs. So. And then there are two replacement funds. One is for government vehicles, meaning fire, parks and recreation. And then, and, and some police vehicles, there are quite a few police vehicles that are leased. And then also the government or the utility has a replacement fund. Both of those are just saving for purchase. We consider the useful life of a piece of equipment or vehicle and we purchase it. What we think an estimated reasonable value for replacement will be when the vehicle becomes obsolete and then set aside over that timeframe dollars so that when it is time to replace it, we have the funds built up and ready to go for the replacement. This, these, this fund, the government fund and the utility fund would be where you would see some, if we slowed down savings, they would affect these two funds. And then moving into the remainder of our internal service funds are related to employee benefits for, that are in the realm of health, medical, dental and vision. And we've, for the purposes of tonight, we've put all of the three funds together, just so it's, you can see it all together. The city does, we are self-insured, which means each fund pays based on the number of employees into the medical funds, a premium to cover claims and costs for running the medical funds and those medical funds pay all the claims that are worked through a, a third-party administrator that, for services that have been supplied to employees. We have not updated the rates since 2014 and when we get to the expense chart, you'll kind of see that it moves along at a flat rate and then kind of dips down and now has come back up and I'll speak to that a little bit. One thing that is causing us some trouble in that change over the years is COVID and, and the impact of claims, people going to the doctor for or not really, I have that backwards, not going for some time. And then in 2023, you'll see it jumps up quite a bit, which our understanding is that's kind of a catch-up. And I've used myself as an example. I am still trying to catch up a little bit on just normal preventative things after COVID and getting back. One thing that's important to note is as a self-insured plan, we have to keep a reserve of 16 weeks worth of historical claims so that we have enough reserves to pay those items and when they come in, because there is definitely a time lag. And as part of that rate evaluation and looking at the fund's health for the coming years, we have a employee wellness committee that has been meeting. There's representatives across the city, work groups to look at the info, you know, the claims, what the plans are, what options we have and, and make some decisions together for the future benefit of both the benefit funds and the employees and the city's fiscal wellbeing. So here is this chart and you can see that in 2020, 2021, 2022, the claim value dipped down quite a bit and, and, and was lower. And then in 2023, jumped up quite a bit. We are in a unique spot and I'll talk to that in the next slide with some changes related to our claims processor. But right now, there's one FTE that helps, or the value of once really two, parts of two other people that help manage these funds. And it, the expenses are the insurance claims and professional services tied to that claims administrator. That's not something we do in-house. And we pray, pay for a stop-loss insurance policy to mitigate the risk of large claims. And I'll move on to this next slide. We, we, in budgeting the 2025, 2026 values, we are, we encountered some challenges. One, COVID caused some inconsistency. And we kind of have lost what the trend really is right now. There, we, claims processor did file for bankruptcy in 2024. So the HR team has worked and we have a new broker and, and they've done a wonderful job getting everything switched over and up and running, but there is a, a gap in claims processing that occurred as part of that process. So we're kind of waiting for those to come in so we can have more data to kind of better know what the trend is and what to expect for the future. We've tried to budget conservatively with the numbers that are in 25 and 26 for now, but certainly as we move into the future, that real actual data will help us. So in the work that's doing, being done with the new broker and potentially a new stop-loss coverage, we will, may return to, to council with more information and it's possible that there'll be budget adjustments, but we don't know what those might look at like exactly, or if they'll be needed. So just wanted to point that out that that's an option and we're learning as we get more information and make plans. And those are all the internal service funds. If you have any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Buckley. Seeing none. Thank you for that. I'm guessing you're on the other funds?
I am.
All right. We'll keep the buck to you.
Okay, I'll try to keep moving here. Again, I have a couple notes, so I might look down a little. Okay. These are funds that are special revenue funds, so they have a, a given revenue for the purpose of the service that they provide. And I'm going to kind of hit the high points, not read every section of the slides. And certainly if you have questions, please stop me and I'll try to answer them or if we need other people to help out, we'll pull, pull in the help. So the athletics fund provides basketball, volleyball, different opportunities for athletic events that the community can participate in. And at, in, according to the budgeting in 2025 and 26, they are doing well and have a strong fund balance and and can support the expenses of that fund. And please stop me if you have anything. I'll, I'll kind of watch real quick. But the Martin Luther King Center Fund is for the facility, a little bit of a FTE is signed there. And it is subsidized by the general fund, just because revenues are small. They have a facility rental and lease and supervision fees, but that's about the, the extent of the revenue that comes into the fund. And one thing that I did want to point out, that none of the expenses included here have anything to do with the, the construction work, the capital project that is ongoing at the Martin Luther Center Fund. This is just operations. The senior center fund is for the facility that is over here behind City Hall. I had to think for a minute, make sure I was right direction. Similar to the Martin Luther King Center, there's not a lot of revenue that comes into this fund, so the general fund helps subsidize the operations. And it just, the expenses are one and a half FTEs and taking care of the facility. Primarily insurance, utilities, supplies. Cemetery fund. You, you'll recall that rates were recently updated in 2024. And there are instances where there are services provided on the weekend or after hours and that cost is recovered through the fees charged for the services. And the one thing that does happen and you'll see a spike there in 2024 that's related to there is the cemetery endowment fund, which is a perpetual fund that we can't spend the body of revenues, but the interest can be transferred into this fund to help offset the cost of maintenance. And so in 2024, we've scooped some of that interest earnings up and are going to put it in the cemetery fund to help them continue to provide service and take care of the, the cemetery. CDVG is a community development block grant and the partner to that or similar, I should say, is home funds. The home funds project is run with, in conjunction with the city of Richland. But all the funding in these two funds, and we've combined them just for simplicity, is related to grants from the federal government and must meet the guidelines of those grants. And so as people apply or there's application to use the, the, the funding that's approved through HUD and then distributed with the city, making sure that all the record-keeping is appropriate and dispersment correct. So that is what happens with CDVG and home. Revolving abatement is, we've talked about that, this, this fund a bit when code enforcement and the CED team came and talked to council. It is the sources of revenue are abatement reimbursements for when the city sends a contractor out to come do cleanup work for some purpose or penalties related to code enforcement infractions. The revenue is district or recorded here to offset the expenses. We 2022, you'll see there's kind of a, a large expense which was related to a purchase of a derelict commercial property that's been cleaned up. And then also there was spending recently in the downtown area to help clean up as well. We're looking for direction and we'll come back to council to talk more about that related to ongoing investing on an ongoing program like that downtown cleanup, it doesn't best fit in the revolving abatement fund because there's no offsetting revenue to support it. So that, using the abatement fund to do that work really drew down the balance and, and so we, you'll see there, the fund balance is struggling. And so we're going to, we've reduced expenses that are in this fund for 25 and 26 and we'll have to evaluate how best to keep it whole. And, and where best to charge related cleanup kind of items in a better way. One thing that they do suffer from, or the fund suffers from is while there are charges and there's revenues, oftentimes there's, they're not collected and we do send those to collections or file liens on property, but there's a cash flow problem that comes if they're not paid in a timely manner. Litter abatement is similarly turned with a different process. And you, one thing I had to point out is 2025 and 2026, you can see that revenue nearly goes away. The, the purpose of this fund was we had adoptive highway sponsors that provided dollars, but we're having a little struggle in having cleanup crews to clean up litter. And so the fund balance was building and right now we're kind of paused to reevaluate what options there are. And look at the program to, to bet instead of keep charging people and not having an expense that offsets that, we'll make some adjustments in 2025 and evaluation. So it's kind of at a time to review for this fund. The Hapo track fund, I know you're aware with, of the facility. It is subsidized by the general fund and I understand that the inter-local agreement is will be addressed at some point in time, once the study, there's a study that's underway and we're waiting for that and then we'll move on with council direction on the, the Hapo fund. And golf course, the golf course has, in the past, the city covered all the expenses of the golf course and collected all the revenue. And then we paid a contractor to actually do the operating, have employees and do the, take care of the operations at the golf course. In 2022, we entered into a lease agreement with an operator that has In twenty twenty two, we entered into a lease agreement with an operator that has um shifted that responsibility to the operator itself. They earn the revenues and they cover the expenses with a few exceptions. And that is the city contributes twenty five thousand dollars a year for um capital outlays. And then that you can see that the there is a building of the fund balance and that's uh reserved and set aside for future improvements at the facility uh at the golf course. The lodging fund is uh purposed to uh promote uh tourism. And lodging tax is accumulated in this fund. And then all those revenues are passed through to visit tri cities to promote tourism. Uh similarly, the hotel motel fund, um the it's a revenue source is the hotel motel tax. And it supports um track or Hapo, excuse me, and the GISA stadium debt service. And then also there's uh awards that are people are, there's opportunity to apply for awards from the hotel motel fund for projects that meet the requirements. And so we have this um fund and take uh applications to uh serve the support the community. The economic development fund, um I'll first point out that peak in twenty twenty one is the transfer from the general fund to the economic development fund that we've talked about a few times uh related to the anticipated either lease or purchase of um land for land application of process water reuse facility wastewater. That that spending to that level has not occurred yet. The revenue that enters the economic development fund is farm lease revenue. And historically and until until twenty twenty seven, there's a an agreement with the Kenwick P F D. Um and some of the funding related to that agreement comes into this fund to support economic development. It will conclude in twenty twenty seven. So um it's just the farm lease revenue will be the source of revenue. It covers farm irrigation and operations and capital improvements that I've outlined there on the slide. And then um there's not included in the budget, but an opportunity that we're looking for some council input on related to an ecum uh a study about economic development and and can definitely get into more details about that opportunity. But we don't have it in the budget yet, just um so wanted to point that out. Uh the multimodal fund is for the uh train bus facility that's here behind City Hall. Revenues come from multimodal transportation tax and lease uh revenue from the uh service providers at the facility and all the revenue supports the facility operation. Stadium fund is our GISA stadium um lease revenue. And we recently issued bonds for capital improvements. So all the spending is related to the facility or debt service um for those improvements at the facility. Arpa fund, we've talked about Arpa quite frequently. It's kind of uh one thing that might stand out is the revenue in this fund looks a little funny because as you know, we've received the dollars uh quite some time ago. But we don't recognize the revenue till it's spent, the the funds are spent on uh appropriate Arpa appropriate uh projects. And so um that's a little bit why that looks like delayed in uh revenue recognition. Uh all the projects we've talked about fairly recently, but I'll highlight them real quick. The Martin Luther King Center remodel, Boys and Girls Club improvements, the Pasco Resource Navigator Program to Support Ambulance Fund, some workforce training grants through W S U that um they orchestrate. And then downtown plan implementation. And uh the all the funds need to either be under contract or spent by the end of twenty twenty four. So we're on pace to do that. And then the fund will cease to exist. We have a river shore trail and Marina fund. The revenues are lease revenues and grants. We did have our insurance recovery uh in twenty eighteen through twenty twenty, which kind of bumped up revenues that are in the chart. And then uh the revenue support expenses for um janitorial and repair maintenance at the facility. There is work being done. We've had a couple weather events that caused damage to the dogs. Um and right now we're in the process of um with FEMA of trying to uh gain funding to help support dock replacement. So that's where the Marina fund is at this point in time. Uh boulevard maintenance, the this fund has existed for some time. The revenues come through a new um zone fees associated with zones in the city. It's a perpetual fund, meaning that um the revenue is supposed to take care of fencing and landscaping in those zones forever. So which is a hard, it's pretty uh forever is a long time. So we're one thing we're looking at is right now the fund has been used to support some facility staff costs for mowing and repairs of irrigation in these boulevards. But uh with the zero escape pilot project that's um outlined in the capital improvement plan, if we can make some changes and and um measure that expenses for, you know, the future can be mitigated. We can um also use this fund to help maybe make some of those air escape changes in other boulevards and 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 uh extend the life of the fund to make sure it meets its uh goals. Park development fund is uh with new development. There's a fee that's associated with park development or the addition of new parks. The rate was last assessed or evaluated in twenty thirteen. We know that the rate at this point, even with there's a three point two five percent uh escalator each year on that twenty twenty, excuse me, twenty thirteen rate. But it's we're struggling to keep pace with the cost of parkland and equipment. So that's something uh that will be evaluated in this next biennium to make sure that we can uh have rates that support the intended outcome of the addition of parks. That concludes all the special revenue funds.
Thank you for that presentation.
You're welcome.
I see Mr. Grims go his light on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just super briefly, Ms. Buckley, thank you so much for the presentation. I'm sure this was a little redundant for our more tenured fellow council members. But for newbies like me, I really appreciated the exhaustive presentation. Thank you. It was very helpful.
Seeing no further lights. Thank you for the presentation. That's a lot to cover. Appreciate that. With that, it looks like we're with the EMS budget and I'm certain as I see Chief Crowley walking towards us. Sorry that he's really excited to say hi or he's got a presentation.
Both. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Appreciate your time and thank you for this opportunity to discuss the um the EMS budget. So I'm not redundant. Um a lot of the stuff we talked about was from a couple weeks ago in the fire budget. So this is going to be specifically towards the EMS side. And we'll cover uh five topics here, the staffing history, ambulance fund itself, major expenses, revenue sources and potential revenue sources. So a quick overview of the staffing history. Again, as you see, um you see a lot of like half positions here. And again, it's pretty much between the fire and the EMS side split, um almost fifty fifty. So that's why you see that. Pretty much across the board, about the same. We're going to start seeing some of the changes and this will be also in our next slide coming up is in that twenty two, twenty three year, um that's where we started hiring people for station eighty five. So the ambulance fund, as you can see, uh we're at again that twenty two, twenty three timeframe. The biggest thing right there is we see a bump up in our salaries and benefits. And again, that's uh the hiring of uh more firefighters just uh in preparation of station eighty five. Um and then, as you can kind of see under the revenues under the green section, you can see it start dipping a little bit in uh twenty five, twenty six. And what that's showing is through the safer grant. So when we funded um the staffing for station eighty five, we applied for a safer grant, which we got. And that expires uh in February of twenty twenty six. So major expenses that we saw uh over the last couple of years was when we rebuilt station eighty four uh to a bigger facility and that incorporated all of our administrative team. And then, of course, we just built uh station eighty five and opened that up. And so with the um the add of station eighty five, we saw twelve point six employees under the EMS side to uh be included into that fund. Revenue sources, um how we get our revenues for the ambulance um fund is through the monthly ambulance availability rate. That's its monthly rate that residents pay. When we do transport, we do, there is a transport fee and we also charge the mileage fee as well. So when you transport someone to the hospital. Uh again, a big part of the the revenue source that resolves from the safer grant and that's a three year grant. That would be ending up here in twenty twenty six. And then um through the uh it's the G M T, which is the ground emergency medical transport. And what that does is that provides a a reimbursement for when for Medicaid patients. There's a set amount and that comes in and kicks in and helps offset some of those costs. Potential revenue sources, uh again, um in twenty twenty five, so next year, we will be doing a rate study. And that's going to look at uh a potential increase in the ambulance rate um and also for the transporter mileage fees. Uh implement uh lift uh assist ordinance. And so we talked about that a couple of weeks ago. So we'll be looking at that uh more to follow with the presentation coming up for that one. And then um an increase in subsidy um by the general fund. And so we would see that because the ambulance fund is subsidized through the general fund. So if we had a levy lid lift, we'd see more funds go into the general fund and that would offset some of the funds going into the ambulance fund. And that's a quick update on the EMS fund and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I see no lights here. Um with that, I appreciate that. Is there a way to uh reapply for the safer grant? Or is it, you know, I know some grants you can get it and then you gotta wait a certain time. Is there anything that would limit us?
Usually for new new staff, so we'll be looking at that if we open up another station. So if what I'm hearing you want to open a station eight six, we can apply for that.
Yeah, there you go.
So we wouldn't be able to unless you opened up a new station.
All right.
Or in include or add more staff.
Okay, no, I appreciate that. Uh I see no further questions or comments, so thank you for being excited and presenting.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. With that, I'm gonna go ahead and ask for a seven minute break here. It's nine oh three. We'll be back at nine ten and we'll move on to item number eleven, which is new business. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lieutenant Thomas Groom with the Pasco Police Department. And I'm here today to discuss how we as a department work to not only be in our community, but to be a part of our community. Our philosophy is grounded in community oriented policing. We believe that the best form of security arises not just from simply patrolling the streets, but from building bridges with our residents. Through community engagement, we continuously strive to forge partnerships that lead to a safer and better quality of life in Pasco. Beginning with our primary service patrol, we try to demonstrate this philosophy. Rather than our officers simply responding to calls for service, handling the call and moving on to the next task, we encourage our officers to identify the underlying issues and work with the community to address the issues with the hope of preventing future incidents. Our patrol officers contact a significant amount of our community every day and their interactions are paramount in building relationships. Our area resource officers are another branch of this vision. By assigning officers to specific areas of the city annually, we ensure they have the opportunity to deeply understand the needs and concerns of their specific zones. This familiarity doesn't just foster trust, but creates a two way dialogue where both officers and citizens can share and act on community insights. Similarly engaged are our school resource officers. They play a critical role in ensuring the safety and well being of our younger generation. By being present in our schools, they not only act as protectors, but as mentors, fostering positive relationships between students and law enforcement. We also boost our community engagement initiatives through more entertaining means like our community engagement canine goose. You may also see officers at parks and events pushing around a platea cart laden with frozen treats. Both goose and our plateas are intended to build friendly connections in the community by creating interactions between the community and our police outside of a typical enforcement contact. Our mission at the Pasco Police Department isn't solely about policing. It's about being a part of the community we're in. To learn more about our community engagement activities or to get involved, don't hesitate to contact us at five zero nine five four five three four two one or visit us at the website pascopeleague.com. For the Pasco Pulse, this is Lieutenant Thomas Groom. Thanks for watching.
Welcome to the Pasco Specialty Kitchen in downtown Pasco, the heart of culinary innovation in our community. Whether you're a seasoned chef or just starting out, our fully equipped certified commercial kitchen is here to help bring your culinary dreams to life. At P S K, we offer a unique opportunity for food entrepreneurs to utilize your pass through windows, a direct way to connect your delicious creations with the community. Getting started at P S K is simple. The process begins with reaching out to our team who will guide you every step of the way, from the initial application to getting your business up and running in our kitchen. Our application process typically takes thirty to forty five days, allowing us to ensure all permits and licenses are in order. Planning ahead is key to make the most of your time in our kitchen. Our clients come from all walks of life, including bakers, caterers and mobile food vendors. They all share one goal, to create something special in a space designed for success. To become a P S K client, you'll need a valid business license, government issued I D, business liability insurance and contact information. After onboarding, you'll also need a City of Pasco business endorsement, food handlers cards and a food vendor permit. With a one hundred and seventy five dollar onboarding fee, you'll be ready to turn your culinary vision into reality in a space that meets all health and safety regulations. At Pasco Specialty Kitchen, we're more than just a kitchen. We're a community of passionate creators. We provide the tools, space and support to help your business thrive. Ready to take the next step? Contact us today and let's get cooking together at the Pasco Specialty Kitchen.
Curious about where your property tax goes? Our property taxes support all kinds of basic public services like schools, ports, hospitals, social services, public safety and facilities that you use on a daily basis. And yet, when we live in a city, only a small share of the property tax actually goes to the city. It pays for things like police officers, firefighters, streets, sidewalks, parks and a vibrant main street. Each of us use many of these services every day and others, well, we're happy when they're around in times of need. Businesses and visitors may want quality services. City property tax only increased one percent each year. The problem is that Washington's population is growing much more than one percent. In fact, by twenty twenty five, more than eight hundred thirty thousand people are expected to move here and most will live in cities. And then there's inflation, the price increase of specific items over time. For cities, the cost of inflation or the cost of providing services grows faster than one percent. Simply put, property tax does not keep up with rising inflation and population growth. We all want to live in a vibrant city, so let's work together to make sure property tax keeps pace.
Cable access channels are critical tools for local government. They provide important information about issues, services and programs, as well as local emergencies. They also allow you to watch your local elected officials in action. Through the provision of governmental access channels, our communities are kept informed, educated and entertained. Where else can you get information about your local government? Make sure everyone has a voice. Support your local government access channel.
Welcome to this edition of the Pasco Pulse. I'm Michael Henau, Environmental Compliance Coordinator for the City of Pasco. You can expect to see more trucks along Foster Bowls Road in the coming weeks as they deliver millions of gallons of material to the Process Water Reuse Facility or P W R F. This facility takes process This facility takes processed water from food processing plants and turns it into water that can be used to irrigate agricultural fields. The PWRF can already process about 1 billion gallons of water from food processing plants every year. But with Derrigal set to opening the coming months, and other processors expanding their operations, the demand is about to get much higher. That means this facility has to be expanded. The upgraded PWRF will provide a more complete treatment for the processed water before it's used for irrigation. That will make it better for the environment and should make it smell better, too. What does this have to do with those delivery trucks along Foster Wells Road? They're bringing in millions of gallons of material to kickstart our anaerobic digestors. We will have two digestors, each digester is 34 million gallons, where microorganisms will help clean the water from food processors. Those microorganisms also create renewable natural gas, which will be collected and sold to a local distributor. The next step...
It is 9:11, and we are back from our break. Apologize for taking an extra minute there. That moves us on to item number 11, which is new business. And that's, we got a single item, Item A, Development Review Process Update Presentation. And it looks like Deputy City Manager Sigdel with one of our consultants here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Evening Counsel. We have with us today, she's walking up to the podium, Elizabeth Garvin, a consultant from Clarion Associates. She's here all the way from Colorado, and she's been helping us work through our processes and identify some of the issues. She's been working with us since March and has met with staff quite a few times with the development community, at least three times at this point, and helping us kind of identify issues within our processes and the challenges with our codes, and will be working with us in the future as well to address those things. As I mentioned earlier during our budget presentation, there's a lot of work that we need to do, but we're at the exploration phase at this time, while also trying to identify some of the more immediate changes that we can make as we work with Ms. Garvin on some of the longer-term improvements that the council desires. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Mayor, council members? Okay, I'm Elizabeth Garvin, and I am an attorney and planner, and I have been writing regulations for almost the last 30 years, which means I started when I was 12. And so, we have spent some quality time with staff and the development community, talking about what's going on in the review process in Pasco. And so we're gonna kind of bring you up to speed on the project and point out some places where we'd like some guidance moving forward and some opportunities that we think we can get a hold of. So our project's been going since March, and we started out kind of looking across the board at regulatory policies and processes and the documents that guide the development review process. This has been kind of a ground-up project. We've spent a lot of time talking with staff and the development community about what's working and what isn't working. And so in those conversations, we've been looking for opportunities for improvements in consistency and predictability. In development, consistency and predictability are helpful for both staff and applicants. We have time and money at play, and we want to make sure that the city is getting the outcomes they're looking for, and the applicants aren't getting surprised pleasantly or unpleasantly along the way. And then one of the outcomes that we are also looking for on this project is enhancing customer service results and the project outcomes. We've done a lot, and you'll hear in my presentation this evening, we've done a lot in looking at the process. When we get to the end of this presentation, we're gonna talk about improvements that can be made to the code. In the years that I've been doing this, in all the communities I've worked for and our company works across the country, we always start with, hey, please speed up the process. We usually end up with, well, the process can't get faster until we fix the rules. And so that's kind of the conversation we're gonna have, will come around to that point. You'll see on a few of the slides some quotes from the staff and from the developers. We're not that far apart, and the thing that's in between staff and the development community is content of the code itself. And so everyone that we spoke to on this project is in favor of the city doing business well, and the development community, and so we're looking at how to get there. So we did want to get a baseline in place, just talking about the kind of quantity of work that's coming through the city. Sometimes we have conversations around who's doing what, and how fast they're doing it, and what's going on, and we wanted to just take a look at some of the numbers. And so you'll see in this table, we've got Pasco, Kennewick, and Richland, and we're looking at in this, building permits for 2023 and 2024 for all three communities. The darker boxes are the high number for that year. So in terms of single-family dwelling units, in 2023, Pasco permitted 280, these are building permits, 2024, 309. Kennewick had the high number in 2003 with 300, but then Pasco has exceeded that for this year. In residential non-single-family dwelling units, Pasco's numbers double or triple the number of permits that we see issued for Kennewick and Richland. For the multifamily, we don't necessarily have apples to apples. There isn't a consistent way to report this out. So whereas in Pasco, we have four and 15 multifamily structures, in 2023, that was slightly over 400, no, under 400 units, and in 2024, slightly over 400 units. So you're seeing the buildings there. And then as we get into commercial, again, many, many more building permits in Pasco than Kennewick and Richland. We're not setting this up as a competition, but we want you to see that your staff is processing quite a few applications, and with many of these applications, they're building permit, but there was project, development project processing that came before somebody got the building permit. You know, because we could have gotten conditional use approvals, we could have gotten rezoning, there might have been subdivision in there. So there were steps that may have taken place before we got to this point in the process. So this is a robust number of permits. You are moving permits through the process here. Similarly, we wanted to take a look at SEPA review, just to see what we're doing across the three communities. So 23, 24, Pasco's looking at 154 SEPA reviews, and 115 so far in 2024. And again, just relatively fewer in Kennewick and Richland, and that's in alignment with the numbers of permits that they're putting through. So this is, you know, in keeping with the idea that despite where the staffing is and some of the changes that could be made to improve the code, there's still a lot of work, a lot of approvals moving through the process. And that'll matter a little bit more when we get a few slides ahead here. So just to fairly quickly bring you up to speed with what we've done, we had multiple meetings with staff and virtual meetings with a sizable chunk of the development community. I believe we had, in both meetings, we had somewhere north of 20 participants, between 20 and 30 participants, all of whom had connections in the community. And then we had staff across all the divisions in community development, so we had permitting, and we had planning, and we had development services, engineering, and we also had finance join us, and we had building, who else do we have? Little bit of everybody in there. And so we really tried to do some broad issue identification, and shared across the two, staff and developers, what we were hearing from both. The next thing we did was we created kind of an overall process flow chart. We wanted people to be able to see visually how applications move through the process. And we did a follow-up to confirm the chart with staff and the development community. We did this for a couple of reasons. First off, because the city didn't have a chart of that front-end process, and we wanted to be able to look at where everything comes in and figure out if there were structural changes we could make in processing to either speed things up or be more efficient. And so I'll show you that in a second here. So here's the beautiful overall table. I know it will not win any graphics awards, but it actually captures the entire process, so start to finish, and I've got it broken down in a few slides, but from pre-application conference at the top to payment of fees and issuance of permits at the bottom. This is what's going on. The column on the left is what the step is, the second to the left is what the applicant is up to. The column in the middle is building permits, permits that go through the building department. And then finally, the column on the right is planning and development review permits, which, or approvals, run slightly differently, but there's overlap. So as we were putting this together, and we were asking both the development community and staff, is this process too complex? Is the information reviewed at the right point in the process? So has the applicant had time to put together what they need, and is it sufficient for staff to review it? Where do we have mismatched expectations? So is there a point in time here when an applicant comes in and they think they're gonna be approved three days later? And why is that happening? And what do we do to kind of right-size expectations? And then finally, where are the pinch points? Where are things getting stopped, and how can that be fixed? Whoops. So, of course, to make things more fun, the legislature weighed in as we're working through this process, and we have new update timeframes on development review. So this is a change to a law that's currently in place. And if you take a look at the Washington Code, you'll see that when you look at the first section, it's everything that works until January 1st of next year, and then these are the new timeframes that take effect as of January 1st, although probably the 2nd, I don't know if you guys are gonna process anything on the 1st. But the important thing here is that the timeframes for review, which start at a determination of completeness, which is when an application is ready to be reviewed and then decided on, are broken up by the process that's used to review it. So is it a permit that doesn't require public notice? That's a 65 calendar day review. Permit that does require public notice, 100-day calendar review. Permits that require public notice and a public hearing, that's 170 calendar days. And then we have multi-permit applications and complex projects. Those are also at 170 days. This is new legislation, and so we would expect that after the city staff and attorney has an opportunity to think in, think about it, and weigh in on it, there will be some clarifications here. But this is kind of the starting point of what we're working with as we think about the development review process in Pasco. I do want to point out that if you, if you kind of see this as a shot clock, there are ways that the clock gets stopped. So if an applicant has submitted an application that requires additional information, and staff says we need additional information, that'll stop the clock. And also, an applicant can make a request to stop the clock if there is benefit to negotiating or spending more time. So again, early days on this, there'll be more information, but this is something that we're thinking about within the processing. One of the points that's relevant...
We do have one quick question from Councilmember Harsik.
Yeah, just that last bullet point, multi-permit complex projects, in the quote marks, projects of a certain size and type, is that, are those parameters specifically defined somewhere?
So I am not gonna weigh in with an opinion. I'm gonna let your city attorney go on that, but the projects of a certain size and type is the legislative language, and what I believe they're trying to say is that the city has some room to go in and figure out what types of projects you would want to pull out separately. So something that might otherwise hit a shorter deadline, you might want to say, no, we're really gonna need 170 days on that. Also, the multi-permit process, permits, applications, that is, we don't think is like a subdivision in 170 days. Those will be consecutive permits. So it'd be preliminary plat permit or approval, then it'd be final approval. So I think there will be some more clarification to this to make sure that the city doesn't actually run something through too quickly for both the applicant and the city.
Okay.
Okay? That address your concern? Okay.
Yeah, I just was wondering if that was the specific language included in the law, or if there was anything else in addition.
Projects of a certain size and type, and so it's kind of wide open for you guys to decide what that's gonna be.
Okay, thanks.
Projects that get submitted on a Tuesday, that would be a certain type, but you'll get there. One of the things that's gonna be important in this process is the determination of completeness. So a complete application, and this is just a general description of it, is not just everything that checks the boxes, but it is closer to something you could decide on, or the building permit crew could decide on, or planning could decide on. So I think a good way to think about it is, it's checked all the boxes, and it's in good enough shape for you to take a look at it. So that is gonna be when the clock starts. And one of the conversations that we've been having is, how can the city work before you get to a complete application? Work with the applicant to make sure that you have quality applications coming through? And then how does the city work after a complete application timeframe starts? So these are some of the things that we're considering in this process. So to go back to that overall, the common procedures flow chart, just in a little more detail, not a lot. Most applications, as they come in, the applicant now has an option to do a pre-application meeting. Some communities use that as an option that we really strongly encourage, and some use it as you need to come in and do a pre-app meeting. And the reason you would do that is to make sure that everyone's on the same page with what needs to be included in the application. So that is something that we've kind of outlined. The city offers it. It may be something that we want to pump up just a little bit, and that might help the rest of the processing. Then, so then the application, the applicant pulls their application together, and they submit it, comes in in a couple of different ways. They pay preliminary fees. There are gonna be more fees later in this setup, and we're gonna talk about ways to do a little consolidation on that. So finally, we get to, the city is currently doing a completeness review, and so you've got staff reviewing the applications and ensuring that they are complete. A building permit that is incomplete, that applicant gets sent a hold letter, and they're told what additional information they need. And a planning permit incomplete gets sent a notice of incomplete application. So one of the things we discovered as we were putting this together, that the city's process is sound. The way things are laid out and the order that they go in, more or less, really meets sort of best practices in processing, in reviewing applications. So we didn't come across any structural problems where we were looking at this going, wow, there's not another community in the country that does this, only Pasco. Not true. You're just following normal steps. So then we look a layer deeper and say, okay, how are we working with this information, and how are we working with the applicant to make sure that we're helping them get through the progress, process? So we've got that orange bar across the bottom. We've hit completeness review, so the clock's gonna start now. And this is when we get into a little more process, and so we're reviewing the application, and we're doing coordination review with all the divisions. This is where the SEPA and the traffic impact analysis kick in. We have building permit doing their review, which is sometimes with the other divisions, sometimes not, depending on what comes in with the application. We have planning and development review doing their review, and we have back and forth with the applicant going here. The clock is running, and we want to make sure that we have everything going properly. And so one of the steps that we identified here that could potentially happen earlier, or could happen more clearly, is that SEPA TIA review, and I'm gonna talk about that in a few slides. For the most part, the rest of this is stepwise correct. We have some deadline gaps that we can talk about filling in, where things might get stalled out because an applicant's been asked to provide more information, but they're not ready to provide that information, or where we have communication going on across divisions within the city. Um, and we could potentially um be a little more um complete in how we manage that and um talk to the applicant. So for the most part, you're going to see us um through the rest of this PowerPoint, pick out individual places that can be corrected. Um, and those corrections could mean um a lot more certainty um for the applicant and the city. So we have two sets of pinch points here, so places where things get jammed up. We have developers on the left side and we have staff on the right side. Um, consistently from the development community, um, we heard that the city should take a look at the SEPA review threshold. So at what point um do the um categorical exemptions from SEPA? So the statute says some things don't have to come through, some things do. And there's some wiggle room in there. And um Pasco's review thresholds are set low. It catches a lot of projects. Um, and so we heard um, you know, what would what would happen if the city raised those thresholds and let some smaller projects go through? Um, we also heard that SEPA linked with the tra- uh traffic impact analysis um slows down the process and um and creates some uncertainty, um particularly um with the traffic review. We heard that applicants want the ability to make online payments, um that they're currently unable to do a check on their application status. And um so a apart from calling and saying, hey, where am I? Um, this is something that other communities allow um through their electronic permitting system. So like through Trakit, um you could say, here's where your application is. And then we heard about the unpredictability of fees and the unpredictability of timelines. Timeline specifically um with regard to the SEPA review and the TIA. So we've got kind of a circular list here from the developers. Um, staff list, slightly different, um but related um in their ability um to um make the process move and to help applicants. And so um you can see on the top that um staff is looking for processing efficiency um so they can free themselves up for more people facing work. You can help an applicant better if you can spend some time with them. Um, and so staff is looking for the ability to work with applicants um to get to a complete or compliant application. Uh, but they they need to work with applicants throughout the process. And so they're also looking for ways um to provide a consistent point of contact. And then um one of the places where staff really gets jammed up, um and this may lead to more internal discussions, is the the lack of measurable or objective standards in the regulations leave room for negotiation. And um negotiation might seem great, we're negotiating development approvals. Um, but actually, we want to hold the negotiation to the most important project-related things. We want the rest of it to move very consistently. Um, and so the applicant knows what they're going to be held to and staff knows what they need to see in the application. Okay, so we want to get to the consistency and predictability, customer service and good project outcomes. So in terms of how do we draft regulations to get there? Or even how do we look at processes to get there? Um, we kind of do three things. These are best practices in the regulatory community. So we want to reduce uncertainty, want to be clear about who has to meet the standards, when they have to meet the standards, um eliminate that negotiation around, do I have to do it? Do I not have to do it? Um, we want to create clarity in the in the standards and in the process. So this is an opportunity um to establish objective review criteria. This is an opportunity to reflect city expectations. So if we've set the standards to say, when we review and approve a conditional use application, it's going to meet the plan and it's going to meet our transportation requirements. And we are looking at it to see that it is a good fit in the community. This both helps the applicant understand how to frame their application and it helps um staff to review the application and do a staff report about it. And then finally, back to my last point on the last slide, we really want to get a structured approach um and and standardize it. Most cities have a set of core application types um that are just kind of the bread and butter of applications. They're not super big, they're not really small. This is the development that we're seeing going forward. That's the place we want to think about regulating to. We want to think about taking uh larger, more complex projects. Maybe the projects that were um specifically called out in the legislation. We might want to do a specific process where we can look at the multiple parts of that. We also might want to look at the smaller projects, more one-off or mom-and-pop projects. Or, you know, I'm coming in to build one house and I'm not going to build a house again in the next twenty years if I do it right. And we might want to loosen up the regulations for those. Not eliminate them, but we might want to see how those don't need to go through the process. And so in doing this, we're looking to create capacity for staff. They don't have to touch everything. And for those things that they see frequently, we have the standards in place. So um we've identified some, what I called quick fixes, and I'm going to own that and take it back. These are some fixes that we can do now that will actually serve important purposes. The timing just happens to be great. So the quick is, we're going to get on it. These aren't temporary fixes, they are actually long-term. Um, and so let's talk about them. Um, the first one is uh for SEPA. We're going to take a look at the thresholds where the city has set them um and look at the opt-in levels that are in the legislation. Um, so the example I've been giving all day that I'm sure everyone over here is sick of hearing is the um for a single-family residential, right now, that baseline is four dwelling units. You qualify for SEPA, it could go up to thirty, right? So if you think about that, if someone right now is doing eight units, they're going to trigger SEPA. If the city decides to go up to ten, that's going to drop some projects out. The key is, the projects get dropped out, still will need some regulation to make sure um that they are protecting all of the things that SEPA would protect. And so um that's part of the redrafting that we'll talk about. So we'll take a more structured approach to that. But it will um focus um staff review on those core projects that you're looking at. Um, in terms of the traffic impact analysis, we can decouple it um from SEPA. Many communities do traffic impact analysis as a standalone process. Um, it does not need um to be linked with SEPA. Um, we are looking at fully pulling those apart. Um, I am not sure today, there may be an interim intermediate place as um the city gets some of the impact fees updated where we need to keep them linked. But we think ultimately by um cleaning up the process that is currently outside of um the code and adding standards for what the city wants to see, which gets us to that predictable place um in terms of transportation design, um that these can be separated and then that there can be more um structure given to um traffic and pedestrian and bike design um going forward. Other fixes we can make? Um, I'm going to turn this one over to Rija, who's going to talk a little bit about fee structure. Um, this is a great way to um get in and add um some more objectivity.
Thank you. And we discussed a little bit of this during uh the budget presentation, but essentially going back to uh reducing uncertainty and predictability. When you're thinking about um, you know, serving our customers, uh we really want to put ourselves in their shoes uh and think about what are the things that are really important to them. Um, and what we hear um on a very regular basis is uh not just how much it costs, but um it it's not always about that dollar amount. Um, it is about, is this it? Uh, are there going to be any other surprises? Because as you're embarking upon a project, you're looking at the numbers and you're 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 wanting to make sure that they make sense business-wise. Um, so our structure, our fee structure, as they currently exist for development fees, uh do not quite meet that needs. Uh, we did find out that actually at what, at one point, we did have some more predictable fee structures and we changed it. Um, I and I'm sure that that it made sense at that time. So we're looking to um listen to some of the feedback. What we've heard consistently is a percentage of the project value. Um, so uh we're we're working on that at staff level. Um, and we'll be getting back to you early next year uh in January uh with some options. Um, thankfully, uh SEPA, TIA and simplification of fee structures are things that not just something that we've outreach, um but Elizabeth has uh talked with the development community and gotten their input. Uh, and this has been um a pretty consistent theme that has come out is um that our fees are um are not predictable. Uh, also, um, there are some things as we are looking to um do our um uh simplify our fees, um our traffic impact fees are 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 a key. Uh, and that's something that we talked about last week. Uh, and um similarly, there will be other fees. And I'll just bring up park impact fees since we're talking right there on the slide about um park and open space dedication. There are a lot of fees, as council has already um noted, uh that need to be looked at and updated on a regular basis. So that there's not a huge jump uh and disporp- disporp- high impact um at one time. Um, and um so those increases happen um over time um and not at one time, which which would create some hardship.
Are you finished?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, so la- um last up on the list is um to simplify the park and open space dedication. Um, and I've got a slide on this coming up. But similarly to um the um traffic impact analysis and establishing um standards for um what type of connected system you'd like to see in the city, going in and implementing the parks plan and thinking about um how the city would like to do park and open space dedication moving forward is an opportunity to implement policy. And so this is a place where we can really use the um regulatory language to reinforce the city's priorities and policies and to see those things happen over time. So I talked about this one um in a little detail because it was the start of our list earlier. Um, so for the SEPA review, we'll look at those um categorical exemptions. We'll look at um perhaps adjusting uh the minor construction project exemptions. And then there's one more category um to look at. So these these bottom two bullets, these are opt-in provisions in the legislation. And it doesn't appear um that the city has opted in any time in the last ten, fifteen years. And so it's still out there for you to opt in. Um, there is an opt-in category um for an exemption for infill and housing development. Um, so these are the things that we'll be exploring um and bringing language back to you for you to tell us if we're headed in the right direction with that. Traffic impact analysis, so what we want to do um is get a complete system going. Um, look at putting the right enabling um language in the um Pasco municipal code. Make sure that we're covering all the topics you want to see. Um, and then the next step further from the process is putting um the design standards in place. So what sort of pedestrian sidewalk design um does the city want to see? And how do we reflect um what's in the plans from that? And bike infrastructure, same thing. So um this is what we'll be looking at, the procedure and the standards go hand in hand. Um, so um we talked about simplifying the fee structure um and getting those um fees in the right place. I don't know if there's anything else you want to jump in on this one? Okay, we're so excited about fees, we're getting a little redundant here because it's exciting. I'm going to go up to parks. So this this is an opportunity um to go into the code and create that predictable dedication criteria. Um, you know, park and open space dedication. The city has information um in the comprehensive plan, you have information in the parks plan. We need to take it that one next step and um confirm that we've got it going in the regulations. Um, and then we want to talk about all the funding pieces that go with dedication. Um, you you can kind of, most people can picture this. Um, you know, not all properties need to dedicate because they're, they may not contribute. And you don't, certainly don't want a hundred pocket parks that you have to maintain, that's expensive. So we want to create a process where you're getting the right dedication in the right location that's going to um accentuate the city's um parks programming. Um, but in other places, um you may go with an in lieu fee. And um there's kind of the unknown of what's um working with the parks impact fee. So we need to bring all of those pieces together and then bring that back to you to show you how the system is working.
I see Mr. Peral says. Yeah, but could I ask a question? Can you uh elaborate on the consider whether to allow payment in lieu of dedication a little bit?
Um, consider whether to allow payment in lieu of dedication? Yeah, so that's the situation where you have a um an applicant, a property owner who's developing and um they may not be um in, you know, anywhere that would be programmed. Their property just might be located, so putting a park on site won't be helpful. Or it's a small enough development um that you really don't want a park going in there. It's going to, you know, impair their ability to do the development. Um, so in that case, um many cities do a more comprehensive approach. It's either a dedication or a fee in lieu. Um, and so in that case, that applicant wouldn't necessarily be off the hook, um but you would accept a fee in lieu and then use that money elsewhere in the system. And so our one unknown there is that you do have the park impact fee. So we're going to have to figure out um whether or not the in lieu option works with the impact fee. So we make sure the money all moves in the right direction. Yeah.
A follow-up question. Um, with your experience in like in this example, I say developer um creates or builds a a park on their own.
Right.
And rather than pay the fee and what have you, and then the city puts a park in later. How would that work in your experience? Have you seen cities do that where people put, or developers pay for the park and they put everything in? And then, I mean, how does that work?
Yeah, so it it varies community by community. But some communities say if you do um a private park that generally meets our park standards and you're going to maintain it long-term, that's absolutely fine. Um, some communities would prefer to have the parks all in one system so they can um maintain and program the parks. Um, more often, I see a more like a fifty-fifty. So you can do half of it in private space that's yours and you can put pickleball courts on it or whatever you think your residents are going to like. And the rest of it's going to be public open space. Um, I think the policy concern there is if we have um a series of private parks all over the space, is it, does it become our park and we're not going to share it with neighboring subdivisions? Um, so we want to make sure that we're balancing what's available um for use in the community against what is, you know, helpful to the development process and the, you know, choices that the applicant might make might help them save some money along the way. So we want to make sure the city is is doing the right thing for the community overall.
What do you mean? But what if the developer just puts in a park and then essentially just turns it over to the city? It's not a private park, it would essentially become part of the public park system.
Yeah, so that's something you'd want to know about upfront because that's going to impact your maintenance costs long-term. Um, and so particularly if they're just dedicating land and it's open space and you were looking for a finished park, um, that's the conversation that we want to have where we want to say in the regulations, you know, this choice, it looks like this. Private choice looks like this, public choice looks like this. Um, so so we don't get that person who says, okay, I've got this scrappy corner over here and it drains into the storm drainage and it's yours. And you guys can't get maintenance machinery back there and it's a problem. So that's a conversation we want to have at the beginning of the process.
Thank you, that really helped me. Thank you.
Yep. Okay, so just about finished here. I'm going to turn it back. Um, Rija's going to finish us off here. Next few slides, all yours.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Um, so we uh are looking at, we talked about the intermediate vision. And I do want to mention that I forgot to update this slide. So Elizabeth has been kind to go through with something that is a little bit subpar. Um, and I appreciate that. We're looking at some of the intermediate um steps that we just talked about with SEPA and TIA uh and um our fees, uh looking into our fees. But we also have um some pretty uh big, lot of work to do with our systems as well. Uh, and the tools that we're providing, not just to our customers, but to our staff as well. Uh, that's a pretty big um effort, uh but also one that we believe will uh uh really help our staff deliver the best customer care to our customers. Um, the online applications is one that is critical. Uh, how this business happens at this time is either um, you know, somebody prints out the form, uh fills out the application, brings it to uh our windows and then we take that and- And then we take that and then we do data entry. Not ideal in this day and age. Similarly, it is filled out and then attached in an email. And then we do a data entry to our system. So we're looking to do some online application with the current system that we have. We are also looking to do online payments, which is going to unfortunately take a little bit longer time than we had anticipated. We have some contractual issues with our current payment processor. And extending that contract while in the short term might be a great idea. In the long term would hamstrung us a little bit with what we might actually want to replace our permitting system with. And as we get working on some of the code changes and standardizing things, bringing things to council and getting your guidance on how we fix some of the conflicts within our codes, but then also create more clarity within our codes and our processes. We're looking to really be able to provide timelines that people can rely upon. And so that's going to be kind of the last step. But also our hope is that as we do those immediate fixes, we'll be able to show improvement very quickly.
You ready for the next one?
Yes. So overall, our long-term vision is a lot of predictability. And in cost, in timelines and in process. And with all of that, we, really our focus is to provide excellent customer care at the end of the day.
So that's it. We have a pretty ambitious drafting timeline and actually have started moving with some of this. We trying to stay cognizant of the January deadline on the new statutory language and the fact that this update has some momentum and we want to keep that going. So I think there's a plan to come back to you with some preliminary SEPA information in just a few weeks, end of the month.
November 25th.
And then we will figure out how quickly we can get the TIA information turned around and back to you also. And the parks information. So I know it's late and zoning is not always a fabulously stay awake subject, but I appreciate everyone's time tonight. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. I see Mr. Prowl says.
Thank you, Mayor. I sent you an email earlier today. I don't know if, maybe you were flying in.
Possibly.
Okay, no, that's fine.
I'll double check, I'm so sorry.
I'd rather, I don't want to go more into the night. You hit the staff report and you hit on a lot of points that I have been speaking to and other people have. So I think all in all, this presentation was really illuminating. I'd like to get with you for seeing more city council input. Like, I'd like to talk more about SEPA and maybe we can start looking into the commercial SEPA exemptions that the state has and again, kind of bringing our code up to these more flexible code amendments that we can make. And so again, I don't want to go more into this. Great presentation, you answered a lot of my questions throughout the process. And so I would just love to get with you, maybe another council member would like to ask questions and provide that input of things that you guys should look into and just go from there.
That would be great, thank you. I look forward to that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Prowl, Mr. Grimm.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, Ms. Garvin. And yes, I mean, the long-term vision's exactly, I think, where we want to be, where we've heard the feedback also, the predictability as Ms. Sigdell kept speaking to. And of course, the excellent customer care. My one question is just about the new RCW and the timing. As it relates to other cities, and this may be a better question for staff. Is the, are those deadlines, those timelines, is that where a lot of municipalities come in with the permits? Or are they typically significantly faster than that? Or is it just like, that's like the worst that anybody ever does with those timelines? I'm just, I'm not a developer, so I just have no idea.
So I can tell you what I know from working in other communities outside of Washington, that those are fairly realistic timeframes. They account for having to fix something somewhere along the way. They account for some discussions about how to bring, you know, application into compliance. I think from what I understand from staff, they may be generous in some cases where the city's already moving things through. I do know from my conversations with Jacob that staff has started tracking timelines. And so has that information and has been aware of it for a while. And I think that meeting these timelines is definitely something that the city can and will be able to do. I can't speak to where everyone is in Washington because it seems like it's still kind of a moving target at this point in time. So I don't know if you guys have had a chance to do any further research? No?
No, we definitely can, if there's information available, we can definitely come back to you, Councilmember Grimm. We believe that this law specifically is very likely targeting some of the jurisdictions that take exceptionally long time. So you're not just looking at 60 days versus maybe 90 days, but maybe 60 days versus two years. So we're not, from staff perspective, we're not worried about meeting the deadlines. And we definitely need to do some things to be able to not just meet the deadlines, but come well below it. But the challenge for staff is going to be actually making sure that our system can track things because there's also a reporting factor to it. So we would have to report all of our statistics in terms of our permitting timelines back to the state for the RCW.
Okay, no, thank you. And just my one other comment, I appreciate the slide with the baseline permitting, especially in comparison to our neighbors across the river because we know we're the fastest growing and all those things. But to see it in front of us that, you know, for example, the residential that were, you know, almost three times as much as both the other municipalities put together. And it just says a lot about the job that staff is doing, but also the need you're here and, you know, being contracted with to help streamline all this and everything. So really appreciate all your work, thank you.
Yeah, I'm super grateful staff pulled all that information together, so that was really helpful.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Grimm, Mr. Milley.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and I'll be quick. I just love the part about their predictability. I'm having a garage remodel done at my house. And I had an engineering firm do the garage remodel, tried to do all my decks in a row. Get a contractor who says, oh, be no problem getting through the city of Pasco. And I think we're going on a month. And they asked a question, got it answered. And then obviously I need to do some follow-up with my contractor. But we talked on Friday and we were supposed to start today, but it's still somewhere on somebody's desk. So moving forward, not trying to throw anybody under the bus, but it would be great to have predictability because, you know, we're trying to get everything in a row and he said it'll start today. And when I talked to him on Friday, he says, well, some desk. So I was just saying, the more we can move it, the more we could, you know, be in contact with contractors because then the homeowner prepares that it's going to start, moves their vehicles out of the way. And then we're still in a limbo, so.
Yeah.
But I did love the part about predictability, knowing exactly what we're talking about and when the job is going to be moved forward. It means a lot to, you know, the homeowner, knowing that his project is going to start, not knowing what's going to happen, so.
Yeah.
So thank you.
That's frustrating.
Well, thank you for the comments, councilmembers. Thank you for the input, Ms. Garvin, as well as staff. I'm looking forward to seeing this. Obviously, it's an issue that we know has been one that's been percolating, if not boiling over. And so we'll have the opportunity, I believe, to put this on the right track and remain compliant with any requirements. So I look forward to seeing what we get in three weeks, I guess, is what I'm hearing. And then where we move from there, so thank you very much.
Thank you all for your feedback this evening, appreciate it.
See you, travels back home.
Thank you. Back to the blizzard.
Yeah.
I might stay here a few more days.
There you go, yeah. You may want to wait it out, right?
Yep.
But then we'll move on to item number 12, which is miscellaneous discussion. Mr. Lincoln, you want to kick us off?
Mr. Rice has just a couple brief updates.
Yeah, just a couple things to share. I want to do a quick recap of Spooky Hall. It was mentioned earlier, that was a great event. We had just under 1,200 people come and attend. And we distributed almost 500 pounds of candy, all which was provided by our various sponsors. So we're thankful for them helping support our events and making them great for the community. Also this Saturday, we're hosting the high school state cross country meet out at Sunwillows. So staff's out there getting that set up. We have that event for this year and I believe next year as well. So another great community event that brings a lot to the, a lot to the area and helps fill up our hotels. And then of course, on Monday, November 11th at 11:00 AM out at City View Cemetery, we'll also have our Veterans Day service. So we invite all of you out there to attend that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Mr. Prowls.
Thank you, Mayor, I'll be quick. I was just going through notes. I was wondering if we can get an update on the DPDA forensic audit? Or if that's been completed? I don't want to talk about it here. An email or just some update would be nice. I was just looking at that and it's been, I think we had Clark Newmar start working on that like in March and just haven't seen anything come through. Right. And then the other thing I wanted to touch on was the letter and ten from the Line and Business Association about perhaps, excuse me, about partnering with them to be our exclusive, a nonprofit for the downtown. I think they've done a lot of good work. You know, they've helped out with the city with the Cinco de Mayo parade and other festivities. And with the DPDA not being around, I think we should partner with a couple. If we don't want to make it that exclusive, but I think the Line and Business Association has done a tremendous job. And I think Director Rice could speak to that. I think without their help and other individuals and organizations, some of these events wouldn't have really been possible. So I just wanted to gauge the interest of the city council about perhaps, you know, maybe formulating a resolution for a later date after more discussion and just seeing if we can, you know, I think it's going to, with the budget constraints, I think we're going to have to lean on our nonprofit partners to make sure that we have these festivals and continue, you know, improving the quality of life and maintaining that in regards to, you know, parks and recs. So we don't have to do it today, we can do it off online. But I would definitely like to see if we can provide a resolution a later date to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. From my perspective, I don't know, it doesn't sound like you're looking for immediate action. I'd like to wait until we have more full closure on DPDA and we know where we are with that before we move into another relationship. So that's my take there. But I do see a wonderful note that with no more lights on, we're moving on to item 13, which is an executive session. We have one listed for a mere 30 minutes. Discussion with legal counsel about current or potential litigation under revised Code of Washington, 42.30.11.110 subsection 1, Roman numeral I or 1. It's, we'll call it 10:03, so we'll be back in at 10:33, it looks like. I'm guessing legal counsel and city manager will be in attendance with us. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lieutenant Thomas Grimm with the Pasco Police Department. And I'm here today to discuss how we as a department work to not only be in our community, but to be a part of our community. Our philosophy is grounded in community-oriented policing. We believe that the best form of security arises not just from simply patrolling the streets, but from building bridges with our residents. Through community engagement, we continuously strive to forge partnerships that lead to a safer and better quality of life in Pasco. Beginning with our primary service, patrol, we try to demonstrate this philosophy. Rather than our officers simply responding to calls for service, handling the call and moving on to the next task, we encourage our officers to identify the underlying issues and work with the community to address the issues with the hope of preventing future incidents. Our patrol officers contact a significant amount of our community every day and their interactions are paramount in building relationships. Our area resource officers are another branch of this vision. By assigning officers to specific areas of the city annually, we ensure they have the opportunity to deeply understand the needs and concerns of their specific zones. This familiarity doesn't just foster trust, but creates a two-way dialogue where both officers and citizens can share and act on community insights. Similarly engaged are our school resource officers. They play a critical role in ensuring the safety and well-being of our younger generation. By being present in our schools, they not only act as protectors, but as mentors, fostering positive relationships between students and law enforcement. We also boost our community engagement initiatives through more entertaining means, like our Community Engagement K9 Goose. You may also see officers at parks and events pushing around a platea cart laden with frozen treats. Both Goose and our plateas are intended to build friendly connections in the community by creating interactions between the community and our police outside of a typical enforcement contact. Our mission at the Pasco Police Department isn't solely about policing. It's about being a part of the community we're in. To learn more about our community engagement activities or to get involved, don't hesitate to contact us at 509-545-3421 or visit us at the website, pascopeleague.com. For the Pasco Pulse, this is Lieutenant Thomas Grimm. Thanks for watching.
Welcome to the Pasco Specialty Kitchen in downtown Pasco, the heart of culinary innovation in our community. Whether you're a seasoned chef or just starting out, our fully-equipped certified commercial kitchen is here to help bring your culinary dreams to life. At PSK, we offer a unique opportunity for food entrepreneurs to utilize or pass through windows, a direct way to connect your delicious creations with the community. Getting started at PSK is simple. The process begins with reaching out to our team, who will guide you every step of the way, from the initial application to getting your business up and running in our kitchen. Our application process typically takes 30 to 45 days, allowing us to ensure all permits and licenses are in order. Planning ahead is key to make the most of your time in our kitchen. Our clients come from all walks of life, including bakers, caterers and mobile food vendors. They all share one goal, to create something special in a space designed for success. To become a PSK client, you'll need a valid business license, government-issued ID, business liability insurance and contact information. After onboarding, you'll also need a City of Pasco business endorsement, food handlers cards and a food vendor permit. With a $175 onboarding fee, you'll be ready to turn your culinary vision into reality in a space that meets all health and safety regulations. At Pasco Specialty Kitchen, we're more than just a kitchen. We're a community of passionate creators. We provide the tools, space and support to help your business thrive. Ready to take the next step? Contact us today and let's get cooking together at the Pasco Specialty Kitchen.
Curious about where your property tax goes? Our property taxes support all kinds of basic public services like schools, ports, hospitals, social services, public safety and facilities that you use on a daily basis. And yet, when we live in a city, only a small share of the property tax actually goes to the city. It pays for things like police officers, firefighters, streets, sidewalks, parks and a vibrant main street. Each of us use many of these services every day and others, well, we're happy when they're around in times of need. Businesses and visitors may want quality services. City property tax only increase 1% each year. The problem is that Washington's population is growing much more than 1%. In fact, by 2025, more than 830,000 people are expected to move here and most will live in cities. And then there's inflation, the price increase of specific items over time. For cities, the cost of inflation or the cost of providing services grows faster than 1%. Simply put, property tax does not keep up with rising inflation and population growth. We all want to live in a vibrant city, so let's work together to make sure property tax keeps pace.
Cable access channels are critical tools for local government. They provide important information about issues, services and programs, as well as local emergencies. They also allow you to watch your local elected officials in action. Through the provision of governmental access channels, our communities are kept informed, educated and entertained. Where else can you get information about your local government? Make sure everyone has a voice. Support your local government access channel.
Welcome to this edition of the Pasco Pulse. I'm Michael Hinow, Environmental Compliance Coordinator for the City of Pasco. You can expect to see more trucks along Foster Wells Road in the coming weeks as they deliver millions of gallons of material to the Process Water Reuse Facility, or PWRF. This facility takes processed water from food processing plants and turns it into water that can be used to irrigate agricultural fields. plants and turns it into water that can be used to irrigate agricultural fields. The PWRF can already process about 1 billion gallons of water from food processing plants every year. But with their goal set to open in the coming months, and other processors expanding their operations, the demand is about to get much higher. That means this facility has to be expanded. The upgraded PWRF will provide a more complete treatment for the processed water before it's used for irrigation. That will make it better for the environment and should make it smell better, too. What does this have to do with those delivery trucks along Foster Wells Road? They're bringing in millions of gallons of material to kickstart our anaerobic digesters. We will have two digesters, each digester is 34 million gallons, where microorganisms will help clean the water from food processors. Those microorganisms also create renewable natural gas, which will be collected and sold to a local distributor. The next step in cleaning the processed water takes place in a greenhouse, where we will use algae to remove some of the nitrogen from the water. Algae also takes up carbon dioxide out of the air, helping us breathe a little easier. Finally, the treated processed water will be stored in newly-expended holding ponds until it's needed for irrigation. The upgraded facility is scheduled to be up and running by the end of this year. You can find more information about how this project was funded on the city website. For the Pasco Pulse, I'm Michael Hinow.
Welcome to the Pasco Sporting Complex, the perfect venue for softball and baseball tournaments of all sizes. With six recently upgraded fields, our complex is designed for top-quality play, making it tournament-ready nearly year-round. Our dedicated maintenance team works tirelessly to ensure the fields are always in pristine condition, so your tournament can run smoothly from start to finish. But that's not all. The complex offers a full experience for both players and families. Enjoy our splash pad and playground, keeping everyone entertained between games. Plus, grab a bite at our convenient concession stand, perfect for refueling after an exciting game. Easily accessible for major highways, the complex features plenty of convenient parking and is just minutes away from hotels and restaurants, ensuring your team and fans have everything they need nearby. Book your next tournament today at the Pasco Sporting Complex, where great games and unforgettable moments happen.
Have you noticed things getting crowded lately? Washington's population is growing. By 2025, 833,000 people are expected to move to Washington State. That's the equivalent of another Richland, Vancouver, Tacoma, Spokane, Bellingham, and Yakima combined, or 12-packed Seahawk stadiums. Two-thirds of the state's population already live in cities, because cities are where we live, learn, work, and play. State law actually encourages growth in cities, to preserve our farmlands and open spaces, and to be efficient with your tax dollars. And this means that in many cities, budgets are already stretched thin, and we need to figure out how to serve our growing population. More people living and working in cities means more demand for services like parks, transportation, police, fire, water, and sewer. All these things cost money. Growth is happening. We all need to work together to plan and pay for it.
Pie Sharks began just as a love for baking. I went back to college when the pandemic hit, used my GI Bill from the Air Force to help pay me to go to school, and over the course of it, started baking for fun and found out that I really loved it, really enjoyed it. When I started making pies, I found that little mini extra ones I made with extra dough ended up being better than the big ones. So came forward with a few individual-sized miniature pies, so you can get a custom mix of flavors. So I've been here at the Specialty Kitchen since the beginning of July, and we're now entering into our second month of operation in this space. In another year, I'd love to have a few more people onboard. I'm working on getting connections with different coffee shops and other locations around the Tri-Cities so that we can have unique flavors at each of those locations, start distributing them to those different areas. You may even see some that you can only get at those locations. For instance, Cafe de Arte, right around the corner over here, we've discussed having some things like a devilish egg pie that I made that's really good with coffee and those combinations, where you may not be able to get it here in our shop. But when you go to those specific stores, it drives us both to them and to us at the same time. One of our best flavors that we've had for a long time has been the jalapeno cream cheese with bacon. As soon as I say those words, people are like, "A jalapeno popper pie?" I'm like, "Exactly. It's 100% what it is." And I always try and swap around the flavors. I switch out one sweet and one savory every week to change things up, and whichever was the lowest performing is what gets swapped. And that jalapeno bacon cream cheese, it's never coming off the menu. It's stayed on there permanently. Get a lot of really positive review on cheesecake that we make as well. It's no bake, real creamy. And the lemon has been a big pop as well. Pie Sharks is a small, family-owned operation that is excited to grow and develop here in the Tri-Cities. And I look forward to providing delicious treats to anyone and everyone who has a hankering for pie.
Hello, everyone. I'm Ben Zieggen with the Tri-City Animal Shelter. We have some exciting news for all pet owners out there. We know how stressful it can be when a beloved pet goes missing, and we're here to help. That's why we've launched our new online lost and found pet reporting system. This system is a straightforward way for you to report if your pet has gone missing. Just visit our website, fill out a simple form, and your lost pet report will be up and running. It's quick and effective, ensuring your pet's information is shared with the right people immediately. But there's more. Our website now features an interactive map for found pets. This means if someone finds a lost pet, they can report it on our site, and it'll show up on the map. If you've lost your pet, you can check this map to see if someone has already found them. It's a great way to connect lost pets with their owners, quickly and efficiently. We're really proud of this new tool, and believe it's going to make a big difference in reuniting pets with their families. At the Tri-City's Animal Shelter, we're not just about sheltered animals. We're about keeping them safe and ensuring they're part of our community. For more details, check out our website at animalsheltertc.com, or feel free to call area code 509-545-3740. We're always here to help. Thanks for watching this edition of Pasco Pulse. This is Ben Zieggen, wishing you and your pets a safe and joyful day.
Hi, I'm Lieutenant Thomas Groom with the Pasco Police Department, and I'm here today to discuss how we as a department work to not only be in our community, but to be a part of our community. Our philosophy is grounded in community-oriented policing. We believe that the best form of security arises not just from simply patrolling the streets, but from building bridges with our residents. Through community engagement, we continuously strive to forge partnerships that lead to a safer and better quality of life in Pasco. Beginning with our primary service, patrol, we try to demonstrate this philosophy. Rather than our officers simply responding to calls for service, handling the call, and moving on to the next task, we encourage our officers to identify the underlying issues and work with the community to address the issues with the hope of preventing future incidents. Our patrol officers contact a significant amount of our community every day, and their interactions are paramount in building relationships. Our area resource officers are another branch of this vision. By assigning officers to specific areas of the city annually, we ensure they have the opportunity to deeply understand the needs and concerns of their specific zones. This familiarity doesn't just foster trust, but creates a two-way dialogue where both officers and citizens can share and act on community insights. Similarly engaged are our school resource officers. They play a critical role in ensuring the safety and well-being of our younger generation. By being present in our schools, they not only act as protectors, but as mentors, fostering positive relationships between students and law enforcement. We also boost our community engagement initiatives through more entertaining means, like our Community Engagement Canine Goose. You may also see officers at parks and events pushing around a platea cart laden with frozen treats. Both goose and our plateas are intended to build friendly connections in the community by creating interactions between the community and our police outside of a typical enforcement contact. Our mission at the Pasco Police Department isn't solely about policing. It's about being a part of the community we're in. To learn more about our community engagement activities or to get involved, don't hesitate to contact us at 509-545-3421, or visit us at the website pascopeleague.com. For the Pasco Pulse, this is Lieutenant Thomas Groom. Thanks for watching.
Welcome to the Pasco Specialty Kitchen in downtown Pasco, the heart of culinary innovation in our community. Whether you're a seasoned chef or just starting out, our fully-equipped, certified commercial kitchen is here to help bring your culinary dreams to life. At PSK, we offer a unique opportunity for food entrepreneurs to utilize or pass-through windows, a direct way to connect your delicious creations with the community. Getting started at PSK is simple. The process begins with reaching out to our team, who will guide you every step of the way, from the initial application to getting your business up and running in our kitchen. Our application process typically takes 30 to 45 days, allowing us to ensure all permits and licenses are in order. Planning ahead is key to make the most of your time in our kitchen. Our clients come from all walks of life, including bakers, caterers, and mobile food vendors. They all share one goal, to create something special in a space designed for success. To become a PSK client, you'll need a valid business license, government-issued ID, business liability insurance, and contact information. After onboarding, you'll also need a City of Pasco business endorsement, food handlers' cards, and a food vendor permit. With a $175 onboarding fee, you'll be ready to turn your culinary vision into reality in a space that meets all health and safety regulations. At Pasco Specialty Kitchen, we're more than just a kitchen. We're a community of passionate creators. We provide the tools, space, and support to help your business thrive. Ready to take the next step? Contact us today and let's get cooking together at the Pasco Specialty Kitchen.
Curious about where your property tax goes? Our property taxes support all kinds of basic public services like schools, ports, hospitals, social services, public safety, and facilities that you use on a daily basis. And yet, when we live in a city, only a small share of the property tax actually goes to the city. It pays for things like police officers, firefighters, streets, sidewalks, parks, and a vibrant main street. Each of us use many of these services every day, and others, well, we're happy when they're around in times of need. Businesses and visitors may want quality services. City property tax only increases 1% each year. The problem is that Washington's population is growing much more than 1%. In fact, by 2025, more than 830,000 people are expected to move here, and most will live in cities. And then there's inflation, the price increase of specific items over time. For cities, the cost of inflation, or the cost of providing services, grows faster than 1%. Simply put, property tax does not keep up with rising inflation and population growth. We all want to live in a vibrant city, so let's work together to make sure property tax keeps pace. Cable access channels are critical tools for local government. They provide important information about issues, services, and programs, as well as local emergencies. They also allow you to watch your local elected officials in action. Through the provision of governmental access channels, our communities are kept informed, educated, and entertained. Where else can you get information about your local government? Make sure everyone has a voice. Support your local government access channel.
Welcome to this edition of the Pasco Pulse. I'm Michael Hinow, Environmental Compliance Coordinator for the City of Pasco. You can expect to see more trucks along Foster Wells Road in the coming weeks, as they deliver millions of gallons of material to the Processed Water Reuse Facility, or PWRF. This facility takes processed water from food processing plants and turns it into water that can be used to irrigate agricultural fields. The PWRF can already process about 1 billion gallons of water from food processing plants every year. But with their goal set to open in the coming months, and other processors expanding their operations, the demand is about to get much higher. That means this facility has to be expanded. The upgraded PWRF will provide a more complete treatment for the processed water before it's used for irrigation. That will make it better for the environment and should make it smell better, too. What does this have to do with those delivery trucks along Foster Wells Road? They're bringing in millions of gallons of material to kickstart our anaerobic digesters. We will have two digesters, each digester is 34 million gallons, where microorganisms will help clean the water from food processors. Those microorganisms also create renewable natural gas, which will be collected and sold to a local distributor. The next step in cleaning the processed water takes place in a greenhouse, where we will use algae to remove some of the nitrogen from the water. Algae also takes up carbon dioxide out of the air, helping us breathe a little easier. Finally, the treated processed water will be stored in newly-expended holding ponds until it's needed for irrigation. The upgraded facility is scheduled to be up and running by the end of this year. You can find more information about how this project was funded on the city website. For the Pasco Pulse, I'm Michael Hinow.
Welcome to the Pasco Sporting Complex, the perfect venue for softball and baseball tournaments of all sizes. With six recently upgraded fields, our complex is designed for top-quality play, making it tournament-ready nearly year-round. Our dedicated maintenance team works tirelessly to ensure the fields are always in pristine condition, so your tournament can run smoothly from start to finish. But that's not all. The complex offers a full experience for both players and families. Enjoy our splash pad and playground, keeping everyone entertained between games. Plus, grab a bite at our convenient concession stand, perfect for refueling after an exciting game. Easily accessible for major highways, the complex features plenty of convenient parking and is just minutes away from hotels and restaurants, ensuring your team and fans have everything they need nearby. Book your next tournament today at the Pasco Sporting Complex, where great games and unforgettable moments happen.
Have you noticed things getting crowded lately? Washington's population is growing. By 2025, 833,000 people are expected to move to Washington State. That's the equivalent of another Richland, Vancouver, Tacoma, Spokane, Bellingham, and Yakima combined, or 12-packed Seahawk stadiums. Two-thirds of the state's population already live in cities, because cities are where we live, learn, work, and play. State law actually encourages growth in cities, to preserve our farmlands and open spaces, and to be efficient with your tax dollars. And this means that in many cities, budgets are already stretched thin, and we need to figure out how to serve our growing population. More people living and working in cities means more demand for services like parks, transportation, police, fire, water, and sewer. All these things cost money. Growth is happening. We all need to work together to plan and pay for it.
Pie Sharks began just as a love for baking. I went back to college when the pandemic hit, used my GI Bill from the Air Force to help pay me to go to school, and over the course of it, started baking for fun and found out that I really loved it, really enjoyed it. When I started making pies, I found that little mini extra ones I made with extra dough ended up being better than the big ones. So came forward with a few individual-sized miniature pies, so you can get a custom mix of flavors. So I've been here at the Specialty Kitchen since the beginning of July, and we're now entering into our second month of operation in this space. In another year, I'd love to have a few more people onboard. I'm working on getting connections with different coffee shops and other locations around the Tri-Cities so that we can have unique flavors at each of those locations, start distributing them to those different areas. You may even see some that you can only get at those locations. For instance, Cafe de Arte, right around the corner over here, we've discussed having some things like a devilish egg pie that I made that's really good with coffee and those combinations, where you may not be able to get it here in our shop. But when you go to those specific
It is almost 10:43. We're going to extend for another 10 minutes. Hopefully we'll be back and terminating in 10:43. We'll see you soon.
Thank you all for sticking around. It is 10:48 and we are adjourned for the evening. Go out and vote.